Okay, folks, we're going to call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise, Pastor James Julian from the New Life Church is going to lead us in prayer this evening. Or so I thought. Rick Steinmeier, would you like to lead us in prayer this evening, please?
Thank you. Oh mighty God, Creator of everything that we have, we thank you for this evening when we can have the freedom to express ourselves and guide this community into better and brighter, a better future than we have it made now, but we want to keep it that way. So, thank you, Lord, and be with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Councilman Purdon, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba, here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
President.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Well, good evening, everybody. We have a busy agenda. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We're socially distant, and I know you'll be able to hear me, but there are six other members up here, so if you're having trouble hearing them, I would just remind council members to please use your microphones. We're going to start tonight with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please go to the center podium at this time, and I guess we will do single file as opposed to lining up, so, thank you.
And Mayor, for the record, there are no virtual public comments at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. But I did see some public comments, correct?
Correct.
But they're not virtual.
Those were submitted prior, but they're not waiting online virtually.
Fair enough. Thank you so much. Yes, welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Louise Koich. I reside at 26171 Hickory Boulevard. I wish to voice my enthusiastic support for the creation of a Citizens Water Quality Advisory Committee, referenced in Green Sheet Number 20-08214 on tonight's agenda. I want to thank Mayor Simmons and Councilwoman Jessie Purdon for their encouragement of the establishment of such a committee. Water is the lifeblood of this city. We straddle Estero Bay Aquatic Reserve and the Gulf of Mexico, and several rivers course through our communities, giving us the gift of water and beauty. As Mayor Simmons has reiterated on numerous occasions, the water and the economy of our city go hand in hand. It is incumbent upon this council to engage its citizens in the protection and restoration of our waterways. A Citizens Water Quality Advisory Committee can play a vital role in that process. The cities of Sanibel and Fort Myers Beach already have water quality advisory committees. On Fort Myers Beach, for example, the Marine Resource Task Force has provided educational signage on beaches, funded free recyclable bags as an alternative to single-use plastic, and currently educates the public on native landscaping and fertilizer reduction. We in Bonita Springs need to step up our game when it comes to engaging our citizens in water quality issues and stopping water pollution at its source. Estero Bay and the Imperial River have special designations as outstanding Florida waterways, but that has not shielded them from pollution, as they are impaired for nutrients and fecal bacteria, among other contaminants. We cannot wait for the state or county to take action on things that are within our control. Dr. Greg Rawls' successful bioreactor perfectly illustrates how our city has taken bold-
One more minute.
Yes, to improve water quality. I urge you to create a Citizens Water Quality Advisory Committee. It would not cost a thing, and it would add a much-needed liaison between the public and city on water issues. The trauma of the 2018 harmful algal blooms should be taken as a wake-up call that we can do more to mobilize our community against water pollution. We have committees for bicycles, trees, and historic preservation, but ironically, no such committee for water, the very essence of our city's identity.
Fifteen seconds.
Please do the right for stewardship of our waterways and government transparency. Please support the creation of a Citizens Water Quality Advisory Committee. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. My name's Eric Salak. This is my wife Cindy. We live down the street here at 27121 Pine Avenue in Bonita Springs. We talked to the Deputy Mayor, Councilman Gibson, about presenting a request to occupy the right-of-way next to our home. We've been maintaining it ourselves for 11 years, and we were hoping to buy it at one time from whoever owned it, but we found out it was a paper road, and it wasn't for sale. So what we would like to do is we would like to utilize half of that right-of-way. Like, we would put a fence like 12 feet off of our property line, and then eight more feet after that, we would keep the grass cut and everything clear, so people can walk through and, you know, utilize the area to go over to the other street, over to the park and stuff. We understand that someday down the line, the city might want to make it into a pathway or something to that effect, but we're willing to agree whatever the city wants to do with that part of it. Until then, we're requesting, you know, the occupation of the right-of-way. Councilman Gibson is going to present a vote on our behalf or whatever, and we'd just like you to vote yes in our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Whitney Cavallieri. I'm here representing Timothy O'Malley, owner of Johnny Malloy Sports Pub, a local favorite for many years. Tim fully supports the Barefoot Beach Hotel Development Project and believe activity breeds activity. This will be a great improvement for the area. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Pay no attention to this man up here trying to run the timer box.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, welcome.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. Good to be here tonight, and my name is Clark Pear. I'm here representing Jan Decourt. She's a homeowner of Bonita, that 26801 Sama Set Way for over three years now, and she's in full support of the Barefoot Beach Project. She thinks it will make a great improvement to the community, help the tax base, and clean up the area, also improve property values, and help with the parking in the area. She would have come here herself tonight, but she's in Utah visiting her son, so she asked me to come at her place. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Rick.
Good evening, Rick Steinmeier, for the record. It used to be, it used to be, it used to be four minutes. I don't know, you had the right to change it to three, but it used to be four minutes. I'm concerned about this CDBG, this, give me more time, CBGT HUD, federal government money coming into Bonita. The federal government is encroaching on our responsibility as a city. They're showing money at us. Of course, we always want to spend their money. It's somebody else's money. Thing is, we got to find out who's poor enough, who's low enough income, so that we can spend it in their neighborhood. Whose job is that to decide who's poor and who isn't poor? Why are we doing that? Social engineering. I don't, I'm afraid the government keeps growing, and we have our own problems in this city, and we can take care of our own problems. As far as these people on Pine Avenue that want to use this piece of property, if they maintain it, that's fine. What I'm concerned about is I have a plat, an old plat, this was South Riverside Drive, one of the first developments in Bonita back in the '30s or even before, because my uncle, aunt and uncle owned the houses in there, and they kept their boat right close to the river by Island Park. And there is a paper road, a paper access to the river, which is for the neighborhood, and I'm afraid, and I don't want to lose that, and I'd like to see it used for canoe ramp or something, give people access in that side of the river, in that side of terrace of Old 41, access to the river and stuff. So I gave Jessie a copy of the plat I have, and I'll get some more copies too, and we'll talk about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for being here tonight. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is John Pano. I live in Bonita Springs, and I have a company called CGT Kayaks. I want to speak about two items on the agenda tonight. One is London Bay Homes project on Coconut Road, and how important it is to continue moving that forward. I sent you guys an email earlier outlining this, but I want to mention some things that weren't in the email. They went out, tattled with me out to Mount Key, and learned about the history and checked out the environment. They met and talked with the water scientists out at the college. They met with the Historical Society and talked to them about the history and putting a historic park there. They've gone out of their way to meet with and talk with everybody to get an idea of what the community wants, and they've actually done a lot of things that the previous developer would have never given us. And this is a great opportunity to move this forward and get access to that east side of the bay, and I just want to say how in support I am of developers coming in, and what I like to call eco-developers, new developers that are thinking of new ideas for the environment and for us as a community. The second item is the advisory, Water Advisory Board, and how important that is. For those folks that don't know me, I spend six days a week on the bay and in the water. And if you saw me this week, I was with a herd of manatee, about 20 of them floating down Spring Creek. It's so vital to not just our environment, but to our economy, that we have and we regulate and we take care of our water. It's our economy, it's our health, it's our well-being. I mean, people come here from all over the world just to experience what I experience almost every day. We take it for granted, and we shouldn't. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Simmons, new and old councilmembers, I see a lot of old friends in here. Jim Weeks, Weeks Fish Camp, I'm a member of Save Weeks Fish Camp, a member of Bonita Springs Historical Society, list goes on. You know how passionate I have for our history and our community, and how valuable the property is at the end of Coconut Road. Little history is, it actually, the waterfront was sold in 2002 without control of myself or many family members. 2014, there was close for one-year renovations. Never happened. 2015, there was an article on paper that changed course from a Marina to senior living or whatever. 2016, a group came in called V, wanted to put senior living in it. It's the first wind of it. 2016, the paper said it hinged on public access, which is great. Also, in late 2016, the Viewers Road at Coconut Road came up, which is a very important aspect of our county and our community, so people can continue to go down to Estero Bay and take a look at the sunset, turn around and come back and feel welcome down there. 2017, Mayor Simmons, I believe you was looking for a win-win situation at the council meeting. In 2018, London Bay Homes had their meeting at Estero High School for the first time to present their project to the community and myself and many others. I feel they have made great changes since then. They have realized what the community needs in this property, and I feel that they are working towards us having a win-win situation. I have had meetings with them, with other people, not just myself, so I know that they cannot turn around from what they're promising in us, because there's other people that are aware of it now, unlike the previous developer that promised us the Marina and public access. So I am here to support, for the first time, a developer going in there, and I think we should support Item 5D and 58 to move forward with negotiations. Now, this does not have what the community would be getting, because this reflects the zoning. My understanding is that the land use is going to have an entitlement in there for several aspects that would be open forever to the public in perpetuity, and keep the history and public access down there. Remember, this is a private property. They don't have to do this, and I know that more than anybody, but they are offering the community a great access to the bay and to the future, and keep the history tied, and keep the north and the Bonita linked to the city of Bonita Springs, which is what my goal has been forever. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on, and we're going to start with Item 5, zoning and land use items. And Item A is a second reading and public hearing on the following zoning ordinance.
Thank you. A zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida approving application PD-18-45808 BOs rezoning 4.75 plus or minus acres from community commercial CC, community and commercial CS to a mixed-use plan development MPD to allow a 202-room hotel, 42 multifamily dwelling units, and 11,130 square feet of commercial space for a property located on the north side of Bonita Beach Road, west of Imperial River Road, and east of Okina Street, and providing for an effective date. Council, this is a quasi-judicial item, so for any individuals who intend to speak on this hearing, I would ask that you please rise, raise your right hand, and prepare to be sworn in. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Anybody that wasn't just sworn in, raise their hand. How's that? Now, I'm just, okay, just kidding. Derek, any other housekeeping items, or?
Nothing more on this one.
I make a motion to approve.
I would like to have the presentations, please.
Okay. Okay, we'll have the presentations. There's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Further discussion, we'll start with the presentation, please.
Alexa, or?
There's so many hearings tonight, everyone forgot what they're here for.
Nobody wants to go first? Stage fright?
Oh, I'll go first. Good evening. For the record, Neil Montgomery, representing the applicant. And with me tonight are all those people you saw raised your hand. We have Mr. Singh and Mr. Miller, owner, developer, me, Alexis Crespo. Alexis, as you know, is with Waldrop Engineering. We'd ask that she be accepted as an expert in land use and planning this evening. James Lees is here to talk about the architecture. We ask that she be accepted as an expert as well. Rod Nedenfield is here, and he is an expert in civil engineering. Yuri isn't here, but Ted Trish is, and Ted has been qualified and will speak as an expert in transportation. And Greg DiSario is here, I guess, he's a landscape architect, and he will testify as an expert in that regard. You will learn that the applicant has extensive experience with hotel development and wants to bring that experience here to the city of Bonita. Bonita does not have a lot of top-quality hotels in the city, and really, it's a need that needs to be addressed. And one of the things that you folks know is because you spent, I don't know how many years, three years, four years, on your Bonita Beach Road overlay, and the intent of that overlay was to upgrade the architecture along the road, to bring mixed-use development, to have that commercial interface with the sidewalk to encourage pedestrian activity. And one of the concerns that folks have is transportation. And if you look at 163, you'll find that some of the ways that you can look at and deal with transportation issues is multimodal transportation, so encouraging pedestrians, and you'll learn that there's a shuttle, so encouraging that kind of multimodal helps to address your transportation issues. And one of the things 163 encourages is infill development, you know, so that you're not causing roads to have to be extended some distance out. As I indicated, Greg DiSario is here. He's going to talk about the landscaping. The landscaping is this distinct upgrade to what you have in the area. Stormwater management is always an issue in the city of Bonita, and I know that some of you, I believe, have had people inquire about the coastal high hazard issue. And I want to say, before the experts talk about that, one, the coastal high hazard area is not a wind issue, it's a flood issue. The city, South Florida, FEMA, all have regulations in regards to the appropriate elevation of the first floor. And for those of you who look at this issue on a regular basis, you know that FEMA is consistently raising the required first floor in an effort to continue to keep people occupied habitat or habitable floors out of the flood plain. So the engineer will talk to you about, that will be a requirement here. Alexis is going to talk about compatibility with the neighborhood, because you're going to find that there's a mix of uses in the area, and she will address consistency with the comp plan and the LGC. This area will help to give you an idea of where the parcel is located, and it also helps you to see that it is indeed an infill parcel. And now, when we look in closer, you can begin to see that there's a mix of uses in the area. I would note that the applicant has had more than one meeting with the community, and for those of you who are here for the first reading, you know that there was a lady who spoke and has some questions. Alexis Crespo, met with her in an effort to discuss her concerns, and I believe that you're going to hear the steps that have been taken in an effort to further address her concerns, and you'll hear about that in a minute. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alexis Crespo, again, expert in planning and zoning.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Alexis.
I'll be zippy as possible, as I know you have a lengthy agenda. We are seeking a rezoning of a 4.75-acre subject property. It is currently zoned community commercial with a small portion in your CS zoning district, so currently zoned commercial, currently allowed for hotel and multifamily uses. We are seeking to rezone it to a mixed-use plan development to allow for a maximum of 202 hotel rooms, 42 multifamily units, some accessory commercial uses totaling about 11,000 square feet, and also 42 public parking spaces within the project. The project has several highlights that our team will walk you through. Neil noted this will provide an in-demand hotel use to the city of Bonita. We've also done extensive architectural enhancements to the site, working closely with Sam Vincent at some of the architectural elevations you're going to see as part of our presentation. So we appreciated that hand-in-hand contact we had with the city throughout the design process. 42 public parking spaces within the garage will be dedicated towards public use, and that will be supplemented by a shuttle service operated by the hotel, in which we can take both patrons of the hotel, as well as the public that should park in the garage, to various locations throughout the city, including Bonita Beach, downtown Bonita Springs, and other major attractions in the area. Neil noted as well that this project is a great opportunity to implement a lot of the good work the city's been doing in terms of the Bonita Beach Road beach corridor zone. There's been lengthy work with, starting with tool design and as well as DPZ, and looking at this corridor, trying to bring buildings closer to the roadway, expanding the sidewalks, creating outdoor seating areas, bike paths, so that this area can have slower traffic, more pedestrian interaction, and beautiful buildings to interact with the public realm and not be as auto-oriented as it is today. And we certainly submit that this project is bringing forth that enhancement. We're also enhancing the buffer surrounding the project, which we believe has gone a long way in addressing neighborhood concerns. Neil noted, I met with a neighbor with the, she's the president of the Mango Condo Association immediately to our east on Imperial River Road. Candace, I believe she's watching online, a great lady, wanted to work with us to make this the best project possible. I'm submitting to you that we're reducing the building height tonight from 75 feet down to 65 feet. One of her big concerns was just scope and size of the project, and so fortunately, I work with a good developer who cares about the community and is willing to make that concession upfront. So we are reducing the building height down to 65 feet. That also addresses some of the concerns we heard at the zoning board. We're also committing to doing FDEP green lodging program standards for the project, so that would include enhanced recycling, education for residents, and facilities on site to ensure a sustainable project. We also promised Candace that we would route construction to the project through the Bonita Beach Road entrance and try to keep that off of Imperial Springs Road to the east. I'll touch on the master concept plan. I know it's not greatly visible due to the size of the screen, but we do have the primary access to the property will be from Bonita Beach Road. We have the secondary access to our east via an existing right-of-way, and we also have an interconnection with the future car condominium to our west. Along the Bonita Beach Road frontage, we will have a 45-foot-tall mixed-use building with ground-floor retail cafes, outdoor seating, public amenities to welcome the public into the project and create a beautiful facade along the roadway. And that building will only be 45 feet in height, which is entirely consistent with your codes and comprehensive plan heights. There will be an enhanced sidewalk with seating along the frontage. Our tallest building, that will be the 65-foot building, will be in the center of the site. It's been located to be as far away from our residential neighbors as possible. We have the valet entrance at the front of the hotel. That's also where the pool will be in order to get any noise from that amenity, again, away from the residential neighborhood. We've got surface parking areas that will be screened from Bonita Beach Road by the buildings, and our rear building, or the northernmost building, will be a parking garage, 31 feet in height. I'll just click through some of those, because it's not super visible. So just touching on a few key points before the other team members present their pieces of the puzzle. We are implementing a shuttle condition. We've worked with your staff to ensure a shuttle will operate based upon demand, and this was a big point of discussion at our zoning board hearing. This will not be a shuttle to take hotel residents straight to Bonita Beach, dump them, and let them go for the day. This is a shuttle that will circulate throughout the area. It will take them to restaurants at Bonita Beach Road and 41. It will take them to golf courses, Coconut Point, downtown Bonita Springs. So there will be multiple points of interest along this shuttle route for the guests, as well as the public that uses the garage facility. Again, the slide is difficult to see, but we've noted some points of interest in addition to the beach facilities to our west that the shuttle can visit while guests stay at the hotel. One area we worked on in depth with our neighbors to the north, we met with the single-family homeowners on the design of the parking garage. Again, that will be only 31 feet in height. It will be dark skies compliant, full cutoff fixtures, and we've extended the green wall on the top of the structure in order to block any point source lighting from our neighboring residential property owners. I'm going to turn it over to James Lees, who's going to speak briefly on the architectural style he's worked on with Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Alexis.
Good evening. My name is James Lees. I'm the illustrator for the project. I'm a design consultant for the project team. So, let me try to figure out how to do this. There. Okay, we worked very, very closely with Sam Vincent on this project. I've known Sam for many years. We've worked together on several projects, some projects even for the city of Bonita Springs. Springs. And Daniel, our applicant, and I met with Sam a couple of times, and I met with Sam other times. We worked to ensure the idea of the old Florida architectural style, vernacular style, was what we were best trying to go for at the request, I think, of city council. Some of the massing that we undertook had to do with, modifications had to do with the contrast between this two retail building and the taller hotel building, you know, stepping back the facades of the taller portions of the building, treatment of stair towers, lighthouse tower element, we'll talk about that in a minute, expression of the retail ground floor treatment of the project, additional dormers on the rooftops. Some of the design elements we worked through were details of the windows. I'll move on here a little bit as we do this. Details of the window shutters and awnings and the bridge connection between the buildings, the pool deck landscaping and shade treatments. There's that bridge, you can see to the right-hand side of that image. There's our pool deck, various, you know, guardrail, handrails, screening details, location of banding harnesses, treatment of the parking garage, and its detailing and the richness of its landscape treatment, and the treatment of the streetscape between the retail building and the Bonita Beach Road, which visually extends the storefront and colonnade to the street itself, affording opportunities for tables and benches and gathering spaces in front of that building. One of the questions that came up in the, go back here, in the planning board had to do with this, the question about the greenhouse structure. The greenhouse structure is sort of in the middle, it's the tall tower that sort of stands up in the middle. This entire structure, you know, like, what is that? And I call it a lighthouse, it's a structure with a lighthouse top is the required exit stair for that end of the seven-story building. Lighthouse is the enclosure at the top-floor stair landing, and is intended to be lit at night without causing any glare course, and this whole lighthouse tower idea was an element that Sam and I considered to be pivotal to the site plan, literally pivotal, as the entire concept sort of spins around this point and becomes a visual trademark of the project. That's basically all I've got. That's the only slides they gave me.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you been coordinating with the city in regards to the architecture?
Sam.
Okay.
Sam Vincent.
So he has looked at and evaluated?
Over in the last two years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, bet, yep. Yeah, I love Sam. He's a lot of fun.
There you go. Looks like the microphone's okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we're the asset manager for the property. So, good afternoon, mayor and city council members. We appreciate the opportunity. We appreciate the opportunity to present our upscale development for the, for this project. Just a quick history, we're based out of Los Angeles. We're real estate developers, have developed over $300 million in real estate. We acquired the property approximately four years ago, and until recently, we own and operated 10 hotels in the southwest of Florida, from Tampa all the way up to Sarasota and down to Fort Myers. So we're in the midst of developing five other locations in Florida. This hotel, this is a full-scale hotel. It has a restaurant, bar, meeting hall, fitness gym, and designed, it's, we've contacted essentially Marriott, Hilton, and IHG, and we're looking to do a dual flag with Marriott, which would be a full-service and an extended-stay hotel. It's designed for the smart, independent traveler, as well as for families, and offers upscale, casual, and relaxed ambience where with classical industrial elements meeting the modern design. So, so basically, when we looked at the project, we, we went out to, we did a market study, and we realized there's demand in the community that has not been met. Generally, hotels just don't go to places, there's, it's a result of the demand being there, and there's not many full-service hotels in the area, and that's why we decided to propose this project. And so with a full-service hotel comes all these facilities, and one of the things that we got from a lot of the brands was that there's not a lot of facilities on Bonita Beach Road, and they requested we bring a commercial component to it, like a restaurant, pizza place. That's where we got the commercials, so there's locations for six different spots for a sandwich place, coffee place, those kind of items. And as a result, to get all these things, within a project, we required to go a little vertical, and that's why you have the, a little more intense use for the project. We, I understand from the land use plan for the property, a hotel is an allowable use, and there's many hotels that can be placed on there. It could be, you know, a more, lower density, lower intensive. We didn't feel that's what the community needed, or that's what the demand was. Certainly, can we put two hotels, which are three, four, five-story hotels, more like a Holiday Inn Express, Motel 6, those kind of things? But we just didn't feel that was the right fit for the project, and that's not really the kind of projects we, we develop generally. So we started the process of developing the property approximately four years ago. In the beginning, we met with many elected officials, as many as would meet with us at least. We met with the staff, we met with two community, we held two community outreach meetings. We had one of our staff members go knocking door-to-door in the, in the community right behind us or affected by the project. We met, we met, I think, a couple of times with the elected officials. All this was done to elicit the input of the stakeholders and the community. So, you know, one of the messages we got clear from all the meetings was, there was a desire for a quality development, and there was also an issue with parking. We were told that a lot of, early on in the mornings, especially during peak season, there's a couple of parking lots which got filled very quickly, and cars would circle around, going, looking for parking spaces. So based upon this, we've taken considerable time getting to you today. You know, we've had, we've taken all conceivable efforts to address the comments by staff so we could, we could gain their support. It's, it's been a long road getting here, and we've incurred a lot of expenditure, several hundreds of thousands of dollars to get here. And we do have staff's report, so the present here today is a different plan than we started at the, at the, at the beginning, and it's as a result of all the input and meetings and everything that were held. And the parking seems to have been a big issue, and the traffic, and that's one of the reasons we, we propose a shuttle. Right now, as I said before, the demand is there. People are coming to southwest to, to Bonita Springs, and instead of staying in Bonita Springs, there's, they're placed staying other places. So there's leakage as a result of that, and there's a lot more traffic on the roads, because now you have individual people trying to access the beaches. Our project proposes 40, I think it's 40 some odd, by code, 40 some odd extra spaces so we can accommodate this. But in reality, in the hotels that we own and the national studies that are done, most hotels park at a ratio of about .6. I think the city's ordinance is over 1. So in reality, we actually have over 100 parking spaces that can accommodate parking for the beaches, and this also would result in less traffic, in our opinion, because those people would park at the hotel, get into a shuttle, and they would be, we have a route that's been presented, that people would get dropped off in different places, so that would alleviate some of the, the traffic issues. We appreciate everybody's, this is input, staffs, community. I think that's all I have for now, unless there's any questions from there.
Thank you very much. Amy, do you have any questions?
I just have two little questions, or a couple little questions. First of all, isn't it the case that the coastal high hazard regulations are not solely for flood, but for density? The concept is that there is, and as part of the code, you try to not put higher density in those areas.
And storms like we're having right now.
Yes, and we, I will submit for the record our sup, I noticed that the comp plan compliance narrative in your package didn't include that policy, so we did submit to staff. We are in agreement with staff that we are consistent with your comprehensive plan policies regarding the coastal high hazard and coastal management area. This site is in the coastal management area, partially in coastal high hazard. The vested density by the comprehensive plan is 10 units per acre. Our density is under that at 8.8 units per acre. It is an infill site, so it is entirely consistent with how the city regulates density in coastal high hazard, and to take that a step further, staff also looks at surrounding properties' densities, and we are well below the densities for the surrounding future land use categories and adjacent properties.
You answered my second question, because I was curious whether the density, how that compared to what it was allowed there. But I, I just have a curiosity question. If you're, if you're lowering the height by 10 feet, what does that do to your building?
That's a good question.
If you're lowering your height by 10 feet, what happens to?
With the floor, I think we lose 26 units, so now we only have, I think, around, what is it, 14 residential units, which is obviously not a lot of, I think, the project is a project close proximity. If you compare it to that, we're much less now. They have approved a seven-story hotel. Our hotel sits, is only a five-story hotel, and they have a lot more units on their property as well. And if you calculate the density, based upon us only having 14 units, we're considerably lower than that particular development.
So you're, you're removing some of your units, is that the answer?
We have agreed to, I mean, we, we prefer not to. We believe the plan that we have before you is, you know, a viable plan, but as a result of some input from some of the communities late in the application process, we did agree to remove one floor, which is, I believe, how many? 22 units, so we're.
Well, I like the reduction in the height, so I appreciate, I'm sorry that you have to use, lose some units in there, and I, I think the design is very exciting, and I appreciate the focus on parking. So I, I think the design is a good one, and thank you for working with staff so we could get some of our vision implemented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Jesse?
I appreciate the work that you guys have put in on this, and I actually did meet with you all. And I, Alexis?
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay. So I do appreciate the work that you guys did on this. I think it's actually a very beautiful building. A lot of my issue, as I explained to Alexis when, when we met, is 4.75 acres is small to me. It really is small. And additionally, you have the two, the adjoining property, and I, there's a question about what's going on with the adjoining property. The guy, it was for sale, then it wasn't for sale, so I, I wonder what's going on there. And then additionally, I mean, the way I've read and understood it from numerous people is that with the coastal high hazard zone, it doesn't allow for either an increase in residential density or commercial intensities, and that does both of these on a smaller piece of land. And really, if you were here in the very beginning of the meeting, and they were talking about, we, we want to do a citizen water committee, that's because that's something that's important to me. Similar to when we did the water steward, that's important to me. I love going out with Peno. So the environment is very important to me, so when we're over there, and we're in the zones, and we're, and we're tiptoeing on whether we're within what we're allowed to do in regards to, to those zones, it, it gives me, you know, a little bit of pause, just because, again, I, I think it is kind of small, and I worry that, I worry that we might be going against what we're permitted to do as far as the coastal high hazard zone goes, because it, again, the commercial intensities and the residential densities increase, and I don't think that's allowed there. So those are my, my thoughts right now on it, and I mean, I told you that when I met with you. So I haven't really changed my mind on that, but I appreciate the work you guys have put in very much.
We didn't get a chance to finish our presentation. I think we can answer your question.
Yeah, we'll, I know you have a lot of things on the agenda, so we'll run through it quickly, but Mr. Trish needs to talk about transportation, and Greg will quickly talk about landscaping. Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. Ted Trish with TR Transportation Consultants. Just real quickly, we worked with staff completing the traffic analysis for this project quite extensively, and the conclusions are, we do meet the requirements of your comprehensive plan and your land development code. Just some of the points from transportation that were brought up previously. We'll have multiple access drives to the site directly to Bonita Beach Road, as, as well as to Imperial River Road to our east. We'll also be providing the bike racks, et cetera, to promote non-automotive transportation options, as well as providing the additional parking on the property for the public. Condition seven also requires us to have a shuttle. In our analysis, we did not take into account any trip reductions that would occur as the result of a shuttle being provided on the, on the property, and obviously, that will impact the amount of traffic coming into and out of the property by providing additional seats on the shuttle that those guests would otherwise utilize their private vehicles. The level service analysis we conducted showed that the roadways immediately adjacent to our site were operating at acceptable level service in the peak hours. The only issue is that US 41 on Bonita Beach Road, immediately to the, to the west and further to the east on Beach Road, but that level service issue exists prior to this project being developed, so it's not a, it's not a cause of this project. It already exists in the conditions, and the city staff is fully aware of that. That's really the only points I have, and I'll be, I'll be around at the conclusion for any additional questions. Thank you.
Can I ask you one while you're here?
Sure.
Okay, as far as the parking goes, what is the differential between spots that are available and what you're proposing in the hotel? So if you're at max occupancy in the hotel, how many spots are there? Because it, I mean, it was kind of made it sound like, hey, there's going to be a decent amount of public parking, but if you guys are at a high level of occupancy, obviously there's not going to be, you know, sure, there's public access, but that's a finger quote "public access." So what are, what is the number on the, on the, on the actual spots?
Okay.
And the shuttle, also, same thing. It's, if you're at density, it's going to be, it's going to be people who are in the hotel, which, I mean, I understand that, and that's fine, but just...
When the hotel's at full occupancy, all units are full, there will still be the 42 spaces available for the public, so the garage accommodates the required parking for all 202 units, as well as the multifamily units, and now we will have a surplus because the multifamily units have been reduced.
So, yeah, so the 42 gets increased because of the reduction in the multifamily, and as I said, practically speaking, based upon the hotels that we own and based upon the national studies out there, most hotels park at a ratio of .65. That's not what the city standard is. The city standard is much higher. So if you take into consideration what the practical and what's actually happening there, we've, we will probably have in excess of 100 spaces for people to park in.
Good evening. Greg DeSaro, landscape architect.
Good evening.
The landscape starts with the Benita Beach Road, and we're continuing the envision, the envision implementation of the Benita Beach Visioning Plan by bringing the building forward, creating that amenity area, the pedestrian area along Benita Beach Railway frontage, strong focus on walkability within the environment, the small parking area that is along Benita Beach Road will be behind a 10-foot landscape buffer and an opaque wall. So it will be screened completely from view. The northern buffer with the parking, with the 31-foot tall parking garage, as was mentioned earlier, there will be a living or a green wall, screen wall along it. That'll be visually enhanced, a type F buffer with minimum of five canopy trees per 100 feet, with increased height of the trees going in at the time of planting. In addition, the condition is with 16 palms per 100 feet, which will be grouped in clusters of threes and fives along that northern, again, to help further screen along that wall. This was a quick line of sight drawing we did before the building was reduced down in height, so you can see how large majority of the area will be screened once the landscape starts maturing. And here are some visuals that James put together showing the landscaping, again, roughly at the time of installation, three to five years down the road. And then this is a view from, again, another view from the northern side. We did go to the tree advisory board and obtained approval to remove heritage trees on site, and they will be replaced per your land development code with, when the landscape is developed. In addition, a proposal to relocate three turkey oaks into the Imperial River right away, or another spot designated, as worked out with staff, and then also paying a fee in lieu for some of the indigenous preservation. Oops, there it is. And then finally, we'll work with staff and Lee County right away to possibly enhance and beautify the little bit of median there on Benita Beach Road in front of the project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Eddenfield.
Thank you.
Good evening. Or is it still afternoon, or is it evening? For the record, Ron Eddenfield, we're with RMEC, local engineering firm. I want to start off and introduce my associate, Joe Harmon. He was listed at the beginning, but didn't get announced. But Joe worked very hard with Alexis and others on development of the master concept plan, and should be very proud of the work he did on that. Stormwater aspect, don't really know what to say, other, because my work really doesn't begin in earnest until after we get beyond the zoning approval process, where we actually do some site design work. But in this case, knowing that we had a number of issues that were going to be of concern, we did do a great deal of preliminary work to evaluate the capabilities of the site to be able to handle the stormwater. And we're confident that we'll be able to handle all the required stormwater, plus the additional water quality that's required by the City of Benita's code. Know that there was some concern, apparently, regarding the flood zone issues. In this area, we are in a Zone X, which is in the 2% chance of annual flood. It's used to be called the 500-year flood zone. So this parcel is actually one of the highest parcels west of Vanderbilt Beach Road towards the beach. We're in a little high spot in that area. So it's very sandy, so we should have very good percolation. We believe that in the final design, we'll have no issues with the adjacent properties. Is this going the right way, Alexis? There we go. And I'll just save any other comments for the question period, if that's okay.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Oh, we forgot that. Well, this is, I'll go ahead and address that. Just a real quick snapshot of the proposed chambers that we're looking at. And now I'll turn it over to Alexis.
I will close the presentation, and hopefully just hit on some of the questions that were asked as well. So we've talked to you about the neighborhood protection that we've done, so I won't belabor that. Enhanced plannings, enhanced architecture, lowered the building height, lowered the number of units, construction from Benita Beach Road. For the record, it is my professional planning opinion, as well as your staff's, that this application is entirely consistent with your comprehensive plan, including all policies relating to coastal high hazard and coastal management. The policy in question that was raised by a member of the public, we did try to engage with them and explain policy 5.2.4, and it relates to not increasing density or intensity in coastal high hazard or coastal management area. This site is commercial, designated on the future land use map, and vested for 10 units per acre. We are requesting 8.8 units per acre. It is infill, and it is less dense than the surrounding allowable density on other properties. And I know your staff is well-prepared to address that as well, and our consistency. We did address, through our revised application materials presented this evening, what we heard from our surrounding neighbors and the zoning board. We want to make it clear the shuttle will circulate throughout the city, not just to the beach, and that this is not a beachfront hotel destination, but a new hotel serving the greater Benita Springs area that is proximate to the beach. In terms of height, scale, and scope of the project, we have proposed a reduction to that in order to address neighbors' concerns and ensure this project fits within the neighborhood. In terms of too many units on the property size, we did look at area hotels. Many of these hotel sites are half the size of the subject property. So the Drury Hotel, the hotels at Coconut Point are on about 2 and 1/2 acres, and have the same, relatively the same number of units. Your Tryonon Hotel at Benita Bay is 100 units on 2.6 acres. So half the size of our site, and half the hotel units of our site. So we are very consistent with how these properties need to develop in terms of density and intensity of units. Some economic impact information provided by the Lee County Visitor Bureau, it's substantial, it's not really legible, unfortunately. These are numbers generated based on the 200 hotel units, and 42 new condos, and the impact to the local economy. 10 to 11 million in accommodation revenue, 13 to 14 million in restaurant food, 6 to 7 million in shopping, a total spending of approximately 41 million per year, and also generating 500 to 550 jobs for the area. And Jerry Miller is the real estate consultant on the team who can speak to the economic impact, should you have any further questions on that. So we'll conclude our presentation with our finding that the application is consistent with your land development code, your comprehensive plan. We're entirely in agreement with your staff on all conditions. We felt we've worked well with the neighborhood to make this the best project possible, and a great enhancement to Benita Springs. Neil, would you like to offer any closing comments?
Jesse, do you have any further count?
I, no, I'm good. What, okay, how many jobs did you say? 550?
500 to 550 jobs per year, yes.
Did you, was there a number of the total fiscal impact of that project on the city? Did you total it all up?
I can address that. Hi, Jerry Miller, for the record. Just a couple of points on the economic data. I mean, the run on the impact fees for the city, consideration of the multifamily in the hotel, with the lower, lower amount of the families, about $1.2 million. A lot of, you know, of course, permit fees are significant. There's a lot of secondary, you know, impacts that are on the, on the sheet, on the presentation. You know, the properties are capital intensive, so there's a lot of, you know, capex spending on the property. So it's kind of like a continuing economic engine. The, you know, VCB, they do a great job, you know, spending the bed tax and advertising. Always petition them to do, you know, beaches, of course, is their focus, to spend more on downtown, you know, highlight Benita and downtown Fort Myers. I sit on the Fort Myers Economic Development Advisory Board, and we use their data. It's a wealth of data, you know, Tamara Pickett and John Talmadge over there, fantastic resource. So did that answer your question as far as impact fees?
Yeah, for, as far as impact fees, I was, if you don't have it, it's fine. Sometimes people will have an entire, you know, a fiscal, an entire fiscal impact, and they'll total everything, and they'll be like, you know, ballpark, this is, this is the value of this project. So if you don't have it, you're not going to be able to do it on the fly. I was just--
Daniel can speak on that. Just to close off, you know, generated by the visitors also is significant jobs. They estimate about 500, 550 jobs are generated.
Those are what, construction jobs? Or what are those, or you mean--
Yeah.
In the hotel, or what do you--
Actually, I talked to my economist, right? So the hotel will produce about 150 direct jobs. Then you've got the commercial spaces that will also produce jobs too. There will be, there will be a lot of construction jobs generated, and the economist put it through a model, and he modeled it. The equivalent of full-time construction jobs would be about 220 jobs. The other thing that the economist has stated is the guest expenditure and the economic impact. So those jobs, you can't really count, but you can model them. And there's probably about, close to 1,000 jobs in the community which are created as a result of the economic impact of developing a $50 million project, and the guests who come in. If you have a 200-room hotel, generally, you get about 1.5 people staying in a room. And based upon the market study, the hotel will run at about 70, 80% occupancy. So you would have about 350 people on a daily basis coming into the community, staying in the hotel, shopping in local places. That's, hopefully, that answers your question.
No, that's good. Thank you.
And they came up with a total annual spending of between $36 million and $41 million. That's overall total spending, impact for this hotel. Thank you.
Jesse, do you have anything else?
I have questions for staff.
Okay.
But not for Laura, anything at this point?
Well, I just want to say that I remember seeing this, what seems like ages ago. And I was impressed then, so I'm glad that you stuck with us. And I very much appreciate how you worked with staff, and went down in density, and went out of your way to the community. And such favorable things I've heard, and your project really will do so much for Benita Springs. Thank you.
Chris?
No, I agree with Laura. It's a good-looking project. I do have one question for staff when we get around to that.
Okay, Chris, thanks. Mike?
I'm ready for staff.
Okay. Fred?
Yeah.
I know you've got something, Fred.
Oh, no, I have a couple of questions.
Couple things. There we go.
Number one, are the drawings that we would be approving if we do this, are they now minus at four, or does that have to be changed?
No, the drawings in front of you today show a seven-story hotel, well, actually, five-story hotel with two levels of residential. So we would just chop the top floor off.
Gotcha.
But we're willing to be conditioned with, I mean, obviously, we'd like the seven, but--
Sure.
Four years is a long road, and a lot of effort. We're here to try and get an approval, and we're looking to you guys for that guidance.
And I appreciate the good work you've done with the residents, because some developers don't work as well with the residents. It's hard to me that you have. I would say to your stormwater man, that we're at a certain point in wet summer, that sand is basically 100% saturated. You want to keep that in mind. I know you know that. It's not, and you also have a model to run, so you don't have to even comment on it.
No, 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 I think, and I think that's a good setup, Fred, for one of my concerns, was, is this coastal high hazard? So if we can talk about 100% sand that's wet right now, and coastal high hazards and environmental concerns, I think if you could address that now, then we can move on to staff, please.
Again, the stormwater, the stormwater system will be a, it's a tried and true, it's been around for centuries. It goes back, if any of you are History Channel fans like I am, you've seen Pompeii in Rome, and where basically all their stormwater went into the large voids underneath the city. And this is a very similar circumstance, where we'll actually be putting it into chambers that will infiltrate down into the groundwater table. It does have a design capacity, and again, the city requires an additional amount of water quality treatment. So we will not only have to meet the city standard, but also the state standard as well, to be able to get this thing approved and move forward. This is, this is the other stormwater expert on the project.
I was just going to say, so Neil, help me clear that cobweb out of my head, and maybe anybody else on the coastal high hazard, emergency evacuation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, there's, Mr. Eddenfield is the engineer, so he deals with the elevation issues. The elevation issue has to do with flooding. Coastal high hazard relates to flooding, which is why I asked him, does the project have to meet FEMA elevation? And his answer, I believe, was yes.
Yes, it was.
And so that--
Let's make sure of that. Yeah, that's probably good detail.
So your first habitable floor has to be elevated out of harm's way, is that correct?
Correct. We are required to meet the FEMA standard. Any area where FEMA has set a standard for a minimum elevation, we have to meet or exceed that elevation for our occupied first floor. And we will be doing that here. Fortunately, again, we're kind of on a hill, so that'll help us a little bit.
And then your, your other part of your question relates to hurricane evacuation and hurricane sheltering. There are three choices. What most people do is pay the fee in lieu. Fee in lieu goes, it's designed based on a formula. You pay the money, it goes to Lee County Public Safety people, and they use that for improvement to hurricane evacuation routes, and to improving and building hurricane shelters. So you have a land development code provision that ties in with the county land development code provision that says, here's how you mitigate those impacts, and then they get addressed.
And this building will be category 3, 4, 5, in terms of hurricane?
Well, and let me just, well, all buildings have to meet the upgraded construction standards. As you know, once Andrew happened, progressively since Andrew decimated homes, that we've been progressively improving building code standards. So it'll have to meet those standards. The other thing is, is hotels are required to have evacuation plan. And I would say typically, hotels, if they know they're in harm's way, they cancel your reservation, send you your money back, and tell you to go someplace else that's not in harm's way, because the last thing the hotel wants is to have residents there with a direct hit that they have to deal with, with no power. So--
But you'll never talk to a person, and if you're not paying attention to your app or your email, you won't know that, right?
Well, you know everyone pays attention to their apps. I have weather bug and radar.
No human being involved, but probably, right?
Yeah.
How would that, honestly, that's not one of my questions, but how would that notice go out?
Well, what happens is, is that, let me, that hurricane evacuation plan has to be submitted to the city, and it also has to be reviewed by the county. And if it's not adequate, then they'll make you change it. And typically, that's something that gets reevaluated every year, and it gets communicated to your staff. So, I mean, it used to be they'd have to call you. Now they just send you a text that says you're canceled.
Okay. Thank you. Fred, did you have, I'm sorry to dive in there, but I was just kind of piggybacking on what you had. You're good? Are we ready to hear from staff now? Okay. Staff, please. Team.
Yeah, who wants to speak on the environmental component?
Yeah, and I want to hear more about the environmental impacts, please.
Or, Rooney, maybe you can give us guidance in regards to giving us the appropriate clarity on--
Into the microphone, Jesse, sorry.
Maybe you can give us the appropriate clarity in regards to the hazard zone, and what we are, what is allowed there in regards to the residential density and commercial intensities. Being that it's in the zone, are we okay doing this, or are we, or are we going against that?
Well, so, let me clarify, a lot of the discussion is about technical issues that will be addressed beyond the zoning hearing.
Right.
With respect to the comp plan policies, you have an application which is, by their own admission, below-- their own admission below the-
A little bit more, thank you.
You have an application which is in below the vested entitlement under the comprehensive plan. By my calculations, and, and this is a clarification I would like, if they're reducing 26 units, then the, the actual petition would go from 42 to 14 units and that reduces it to 2.8 dwelling units per acre, which is a substantial decrease in the, in the unit count. So, the policies that have been implicated and discussed today involve increases in density. There is no increase in density under the current application, in fact, it's below the current comp plan and it's being pushed down even further if we get that clarification. So, from, from my perspective, at this point, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from, we're about to hear from staff, if the staff report continues to be in line, you have, the burden of proof has been met in that case that they meet those conditions. And so, absent some intervening actual expert testimony that indicates that they have not met it, they've basically met the standard to be approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Hello, welcome.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. For the record, I'm Jay Sweet with Community Development. I have with me tonight Mike Fegan, we're gonna do a little of the tag team and he's gonna be over there sometimes to make a better presentation hopefully for you. I have with us our staff, Lori Gibson, our environmentalist and our city arborist, she'll be able to answer some questions. On the phone, we should have Brent Spain, Thiriak in Spain to answer any legal zoning questions you may have and Tom Ross to answer any traffic issues that you may want to address. So, that being said, we can start by either doing a presentation or we can go ahead and just address some of the questions you have, then get with the presentation.
Staff, yes, staff. Team, council, anything? Staff, any questions?
Well, I would-
City council, any questions?
I would just like a, like a summary, including the staff report, you know how you summarize that and also to relate what happened with zoning, you know, what their, any things that came out of that and to reinforce the idea that the density is within the allowable, below the allowable units. I, I saw the calculation and it was, I don't understand how they did the calculation, so I want you to tell me that that calculation is correct and that we can feel comfortable that is below the allowed density.
If, if you don't mind, this, may I suggest that Mr. Fegan has, while the conversation has gone, did the calculation on impact fees and he can give you those numbers and address some of the economic things while it's fresh in everybody's mind and then I'll go through and try to address some of these other issues and then you can just stop me at any given time where we are and we'll get the right person to answer it.
Mike Fegan, for the record, yeah, really quick, just to sort of provide some more info on the economic impact, I know there were numbers that were being thrown around before. For the hotel, just in impact fees, it'd be over a million dollars for the city and for the multifamily units, you're looking at 10 grand per unit and then the commercial uses depend on the overall square footage, but they can range anywhere from, you know, 10 or 12 grand up to several hundred thousand dollars depending on how much space they want to occupy for a specific use. So, there will be that economic benefit to the city as well. So, I'm gonna go stand over there by the presentation area and kind of help point shoot if we need some clarification and turn it back over to Jay.
Okay.
So-
You still drumming, Mike?
I'm drumming.
That's rock and roll, Mike Fegan, for the record. Never know it.
So, there's been a lot of discussion about density, intensity, coastal high hazard and so forth, so I wanted to sort of address that just really quick. The first thing is the property, as you all recall, we had the discussion and we made an adoption in December of the new maps with the future land use element of the comp plan. And in that, we addressed two things, the coastal high hazard area, the state now has a very specific way that it's supposed to be done, a slosh model for lack of a better word, and then we took and we adopted our coastal management area. And so, and it's important to understand these terms because the terms reflect the policies in the comp plan. So, first things first, coastal high hazard is based upon basically a slosh model which figures, not to go over the complicated type of soils, how far inland you are, so how close to the water, all these different factors. This property is about, and I, I, I was trying to figure it out today, it is about 2/3 outside of the coastal high hazard area, about 1/3 in the coastal high hazard area and to the best that I can tell, without having an actual physical survey done to determine this, is that basically where the parking garage is or is planned to be, that area seems that it is probably in the coastal high hazard area, the hotel buildings and the commercial buildings appear not to be. And, and the reason I'm, I'm hedging that just a little bit is I'm looking at a map at one inch goes 500 feet versus a scale map of one inch goes 30 feet and trying to make the correlation. As a surveyor, I do that for a living from time to time, so I'm pretty confident where I am, but, you know, it's one of those things that a little more diligence could be used, but, but we're in that, that area. The site is totally within the coastal management area and one of the things that was done when we did the coastal management area is we sort of squared things off so you didn't have to try and guess these jagged boundaries, which weren't someone was in or not and the policies questions address the coastal management area, the state requirement addresses the coastal high hazard area and without, again, getting way over complicated, the state requirement for coastal high hazard addresses evacuation times, they got a funky way they do it, but basically that's what it does. So, we're in the coastal management area and the policy that was adopted in December, which is objective, under objective 5.2 of the coastal management plan, policy 5.2.1 says rezoning to allow higher densities shall not be permitted on barrier and coastal islands. So, the policy directly addresses the barrier and coastal islands and if you think about that, it makes a lot of sense. And the reason it makes sense and staff, staff's first impression when the plan came in was, oh, this is gonna be a problem. We went back and we reviewed the comp plan because this isn't something we review every day and the reason it makes sense, once you're on the island, there's only two points to get off the island and if a storm's coming, those are pinch points. You know, you don't want to be on the island when a storm's coming because you could, you could sit there for hours and hours trying to just to get a little distance. So, the policy makes sense totally with what our coastal management area is and it makes sense with the state mandate, but I will point out that they, it does talk about on barrier and coastal islands, which this is not. Setting that aside though, for a second, the other thing when the staff reviewed this is we looked at the land use and the zoning of the surrounding properties. Now, I cannot tell the guy that butts them to the north who has a single-family house whose property is owned TFC 2, it allows duplexes, he has a lot big enough to allow a duplex, if he decides that he wants to come in and tear his house down and build a duplex, if I tell him no, he's gonna sue the city and say, you took my property. So, you can't do that. And so, when you, and we consulted with the legal counsel on this and so when you take that into consideration, you have to use the use of the property based upon the future land use element and the existing zoning to determine what the adjacent densities are. The adjacent densities to the north, as permitted through the comp plan and the zoning, is 11.6 units per acre. So, obviously anything less than 11.6 units per acre would not exceed the density of the, the adjacent properties because that's what they're, they're at. Even the Mango Grove Condominium Association, which we've heard from and their residents have been monitoring this, even their density is at 11.6 zoning land use designation. So, when we do our comparison, our analysis, it becomes very clear that from a density standpoint, that they don't have an issue, they're, they're not going further than that. So, the next thing is even ignoring the coastal barrier island exclusion, is it infill? It was developed on foursides until the people came in on the, to immediately to the west and tore down the car wash and got a, and they have a DO now, they haven't acted on it, but they have a, a plan development and a DO to build on that property and it's approved. So, again, we use that analysis to determine are they compatible with adjacent because that's what's approved on it and they're still within their timeframe to, to start their construction and do that. So, for all practical purposes, there's no way to consider this anything but infill. So, when we look at those things, we, we start to then now get into the design aspects of, of the property and does the design make sense for the neighborhood? Does the design fit into what you would expect it to be in that location? And in a sense, that really is as much as of the intensity as anything else. If you want to do intensity, you have to start with finding a common denominator and you have to figure that common denominator of what that traffic would be. I use traffic because that's something I can go to a manual and I know how many trips are generated by a single-family house and I know how many trips are generated by a multifamily unit and I know how many trips are generated by so much square footage, whether it's a hotel by the room or if it's a restaurant or it's a shopping center. And if I look at what could be built on it as a use by right, with the lock coverage they would be allowed, this generates less intense use. It may be more square footage, it may be a bigger building, but as far as that common denominator, it becomes less intense. So, then the question is the compatibility and here's where I think the importance really is and I think that the applicant has been wise in many of the decisions that they've made as we've gone through this process. Is it compatible? Everybody has had a little bit of heartburn with the height. The applicant has come in today and said, I'm, I'm willing to cut an entire floor off, I'm willing to lose, I think he said 24 units, which to answer your question, that, that would normally mean 36 more parking spaces added to 42. So, he, when he tells you he's got 100, I think he's probably got way more than 100 because I didn't see a reduction in size of the, the parking garage. And so, when I, when I see that, he has addressed that. One of the, and we'll go through our, our thing here in a second, because one of the things staff also did in the review of this petition is that we did a solar study and what that is, because we were concerned about him, this project shading the neighbors to the north, because you've got single-family homes, it could be duplexes, would he shade them to the north? And we have a diagram that we've done in there that we calculated the position of the sun at the winter solstice and at the summer solstice to see what the effect would be and with the 75-foot building, the 31-foot garage and then we drew in a 45-foot building where it would, where it would be allowed by right and, and we'll show you that diagram and, and the impact that that has. And that too, from a staff perspective, there's where we start to look at the compatibility of the design as an intensity to see whether it makes sense. And that was something that we did early on in the process because we had our concerns. And surprisingly, the way that it has been designed, he doesn't impact it as much as he could if he simply put a four-story, 45-foot office building on the property. So, with that being said, we can run through the rest of it, I can answer questions, I don't want to belabor anything, but I want to make sure that you have all the information. If, if we're, if there are no questions, I do want to go over the deviations and, and the staff's conditions, make sure that-
Jesse, thank you, Jay. Jesse?
As far, as far as the adjoining properties go, I'm sorry, the adjoining property that is owned by the gentleman who was gonna wish it, he was gonna-
So, Steinberg, mister-
Yes, so, okay, so what's going on with that?
I have had many conversations.
Okay, what's going on there?
So-
Excuse me, do you actually know for certain or are you speculating?
No, I, Mr. Steinberg called me about two weeks ago, okay? And, and, you know, since, since he told me it is effectively public, he has a son who is dying of cancer in either North or South Carolina and he has had the property for sale, then taken it off because he has, just hasn't wanted to deal with everything he has going on in his, his family life. I know that he has talked with Alexis, nice gentleman. I will tell you that some of the comments that staff had were comments he had and one of his biggest concerns were the overhead doors on the east side where the service happens for the hotel, because you have, you know, you have food trucks and laundry trucks and trash trucks and all the things that go along with a hotel and over the course of, of this plan, it looks nothing, that service bay area looks nothing now like it did and, and I'll let the applicant comment on it, but basically it is set up now so they pull in and those trucks are inside the building doing all their work and then they leave. So, because that, that was a concern of staff for a lot of reasons because not only the neighborhood, but it would also be visible from Benita Beach Road and we are trying to create a certain ambiance along the road with our overlay and so we had a great concern there and I think we went back for three or four times and again, their architect, their designers, their planners came up with a, a solution that worked for them and it was good for the city.
Thank you, Jay. Anybody down here? Chris?
No, he, he answered my question.
Okay. I think you're off the hook now, Jay.
Okay. Staff recommends approval with the conditions and the deviations that are set forth in, in the, the plan and I'm just gonna, I'm not even gonna read the deviations because they're, they're pretty simple.
Okay.
In, in order to get a design like this that works, we have the, the marriage of the old suburban code, which we're trying to get rid of with our overlay zone when they started and with what we're trying to accomplish and I'll give you a perfect example. The code basically says they have to have a 15-foot landscape buffer on Benita Beach Road from their building. Well, we wanted the building to embrace the street and so there could be cafes out there and so forth, well, how do you do that if the code requires them to put landscaping where you want the cafe to be? And of course, so there's obviously a deviation for that and staff supports that. Another deviation that's in there is one on the rear of the property where it says if there's a parking, any parking that's within 125 feet of a residential neighborhood on a commercial property, they have to put eight-foot-high concrete block wall that had light and light intrusion and so forth. It is a wonderful and it is a very appropriate condition, but we have a parking garage there, it already has a wall up and one of the conditions that we have done, and you'll, you will read them, is that that landscape buffer is basically, and I'll tell you how we came about it, they came in and said, here's what's gonna look like a planting, here's what it looks like in five years. And staff said, no, five years is what it's gonna look like at planting and in five years it's gonna look a lot more than that. And we sized the landscaping as part of this condition that they're putting in, and if you look at the palm trees, I want you to, I want you to pay attention to this, we said you will put them in 12 to 18 feet of gray wood, not the overall height of the tree, the height of the trunk. They, they are gonna put some massive palms in there, they are putting some massive trees in there, that's part of the design requirements that are in this proposal. We specified the gallon size that they had to be, we specified the amount of gray wood, the overall height and they are not the normal code and we felt that that was appropriate because the people who are being impinged upon for all, for lack of a better word, their neighbors to north shouldn't have to wait three to five years to be sheltered, they should have it immediately. The applicant was kind enough and they have changed their plan accordingly. I'm, I'm ready to address any other questions, but staff is recommending approval with the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
I, I do have one question.
Yes, question.
And this isn't directed at the applicant himself, but I'm, I'm still learning about comprehensive plans and so forth. So, assuming we approve this project, does this in any way- way set a precedent with respect to other parcels, and the way, the amount of, of building that can go on on those parcels? We have a lot, so this is, you know, even if we cut off a floor, this is a, this is a big project setting on 4.75 acres. And I'm particularly thinking of a parcel that sits a little bit east of here, of this project, it's got 25.5 acres. And that hotel is being considered there. So do we have, are we at risk on an unintended consequence of, gee, we permit a certain level of construction on a 4.75-acre site, and that gets extrapolated to a certain level of construction on another site? Or do we have the ability to manage that?
I'm, I'm gonna give you a planning answer. And then I think we should probably get our, our attorney, maybe Mr. Spain or Mr. Rooney, to give us a legal answer, because they may not be the same. Okay? But from a planning perspective, my answer would be no. And the reason it's no is that from a planning perspective, we look at this by the site. So it's not just the hotel size, it is the other amenities that go with it. So it's that ratio that provides, provides and or lessens the impact. It is also the overall benefit to the city, in this case, we have the parking. It is the, when we, and this is the reason I think is important, from a planning perspective, when we look at the intensity, that aesthetics is part of intensity. So the, the aesthetics, the, how they're, they're treating their neighbors, everything else, I believe all that is part of it. And I think from a planning perspective, you can draw clear, precise conclusions that could be different on properties, you know, not that far apart. The other thing is, this property does have a unique factor to it. And the unique factor is, and we didn't really talk about that, the soils that are there. One of the reasons, and I'll defer to their expert and our expert, and, because I'll probably say it wrong, since I'm not the, the expert when it comes to environmental, but when you look at the soils there, there are flora and fauna there that you're not gonna find in the neighborhood. You're not gonna find gopher tortoises all over the neighborhood. Why are they there? Gopher tortoises are there because that soil drains very well. They're not gonna drown in their hole when a rainstorm comes along. Okay? The turkey oaks that we ask and, and said they need to be saved, they need to be root-pruned, they need to be moved. And one of our conditions is, we would try to work them, see if there's a better location than the right-of-way, although the right-of-way is a good location, if we can find a better location as they adjust their design to keep them on site. But the whole idea is, is that those trees, you don't find everywhere in Bonita, and one of the reasons they're there is because the type of soil, the, the proximity of wind, all these other things that create this. So from a planning perspective, I feel that you can draw very distinct lines. That may not be the legal answer that you get from the attorneys, so I would suggest that we ask them.
I'll, I'll go ahead and start, and since we're paying Mr. Spain, I'll, I'll let him go ahead and, and give an additional answer, but once he gets tied into the system. But generally, there's very little precedential value in land use decisions. Each piece of land is, is unique, particularly when we talk about the plan development stage like this, where there are a number of trade-offs for that particular project, based on the actual location. Nothing you're being asked to consider today is a new interpretation or an unusual interpretation of the, of the code, the comprehensive plan, or anything else that I think would be applied to somewhere else. If there's another project that was, is being considered, or was considered in the past, you know, there's, they should be looked at as a standalone issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
No, thanks, Jay.
Yep, and Derek, there's public comment opportunity now?
This is a public hearing, yes.
So counsel, if there's nothing else at the moment, we'll go to public comment. Okay, members of the public that would like to speak on this item, this topic, please come forward at this time.
Hello, my name is Alan Cody. I own the Welcome Center over on Bonita Beach Road. I've built it 10 years ago. And the main question we ever got from our visitors here was, we would like to go to the beach with our children, but there's just no place to park. This was 10 years ago that it started. Well, the acreage that Mr. Singh is considering for hotel was in foreclosure in 13. So I came to the city and said, listen, we're never going to find another acreage so close to the city to put a parking lot. Well, the city said, well, we're too busy doing US 41 Old Town, so we'll look at that later. Well, I put a group together, and we ended up buying the property. And the city gave us a, the city gave us an automatic, and thanks to Jay Sweet, the city gave us an automatic permit for 18 months to put a 100-car parking lot, which is what the size of the Barefoot Beach parking is. One acre parks 100 cars. We thought, great, this is it. So, we started going, and then our partner died. And the heirs didn't wanna fool with any parking lots, they just wanted their cash. So we put the property on the market. Mr. Singh, who had been looking for a house to buy around here, had wanted to take his friends to see the beach, he said, we can never find a parking space to park. Well, at that time, the forecast was that the, the population of Bonita was set to double in the next five years, and the population of Estero was set to triple in the next five years. All those people want to go to the beach. There's no place to park now. I have small, I had small children at the time. I had to get them out of bed at 8:00 in the morning if we wanted to get to the beach and park on a Sunday morning, because otherwise it was all full. So I'm the cheerleader on here, and when we did the, the project before, a different, different time, at that time, we were told by the, and I'm, all of you people are all new here, we, we were told at the time that the city, if we contributed to the parking, that the city would contribute by giving us a higher density so that we could afford this parking endeavor. And so that's where it stands. And, and Daniel Singh here understands the dilemma we're in. Not only that, but he's really come up with a beautiful, beautiful design, which, I don't know if you remember, I did Bonita Village. Bonita Village at that time was just one whole block of rundown buildings, which we tore down, put Bonita Village in. Unfortunately, Kenny Schreier there died in the middle of it. But it's gonna come back, it's gonna come back. So I just would want you to understand that one big factor in getting this project going was the need to have at least more parking spaces for the beach, or someplace where they could be, you know, brought in from. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Well, hi, my name is Kim Howard. I'm here on behalf of my parents, who live in Bonita. They've been here for 30 years. And my uncle, who also has been here for 34 years, and they are all in favor of this project. We have a lot of family members that still live up north, in Chicago, in South Carolina, and they have no place to stay when they come down here to visit us. And so they end up either having to go to Naples, or having to go farther north to Fort Myers, and it's just not convenient for the visiting that they do. And I think that they would come down more often if there was a nicer place to stay. So we're all in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Welcome.
My name is Harshad Bhatt, and I'm here in Fort Myers since 1998. Between Fort Myers and Naples, we have Indians, there are more than 5,000 to 7,000 Indians living in this area. Over a period of time, Naples went on expanding and becoming very difficult for people to live there. Fort Myers also was expanding, you know. And in between that, Bonita Spring, beautiful place, beautiful people, was sandwiched. And then, this beautiful place was growing, Bonita Spring was growing, at the same time, it not have any good place for, to host any kind of, I mean, big functions, you know. And then, this prestigious Barefoot Beach, I think so it's going to be an excellent place wherein everybody could enjoy the place. At the same time, they can have a beautiful functions, and big functions, you know. Indians are one of the highest capita-earning people in USA. At the same time, they would like to spend a lot of money too, you know, especially in weddings and in their big festivals, you know. Over a period of time, I'm a, sorry, I'm a, a permanent Board of Trustees of India Association. Right from 99, I've been the president and board of directors, and then since 2010, I've been a permanent Board of Trustees of India Association, you know. And every year, we keep moving from one place to another place to find a place, because the people are growing, you know. And then, we always can't find a big place, you know. In Bonita Spring, there's a big hall, and we did conduct our, one of the biggest festivals of India, Diwali, we conducted our day, you know. But that has been close as of now. And so, I think so the Barefoot Beach will give us a big boost for us to host our festivals. So I would strongly support this prestigious thing. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you. Welcome, Rick.
Four minutes, thank you.
Four minutes.
Okay. People want to park and go to the beach. Well, we're getting to a point now, they can get to the beach, but there's no place to put your towel, because it's filled up with people. There is a limit, there should be a limit as to how many people you can put on so many square feet of public beach, because it's not all public beach. I, I don't, I added up, and I'm looking at 244 parking spots. You've got 202 rooms, 42 multifamily. That's, that's 244 parking spots. And one parking spot for a family unit is not enough. And then you have 1,100 square feet of commercial property. I don't know how many parking spots they got, I missed that. How are you gonna regulate, how are you gonna keep the people, regulate the public to use these parking spots, rather than the people that are renting there? When does it, these trees have been there for a long, long time. They said they're gonna transplant them. I've worked with trees my whole life, and, and old trees don't transplant very well, and what happens if they die? Is that in the, you just cut them up and throw them away, I guess. Do they have to replace them? How can you replace a 100-year-old tree? Yeah, it's, if you go down to the public beach during the season, there's no, there's no more room. We've already, we've reached our capacity as far as usage of the beach, I believe, during season, now the rest of the year, something else. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move the question.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Hurdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and haul this back to order. Thanks, everybody.
I think Feeny ate everything, I don't know.
The end of the first quarter is over, we're now moving along to, right along to the second quarter. We're gonna have a halftime show and a break at the end of the third quarter as well. So, welcome back, everybody. We have now Item B1, an addendum with revised ordinance, second reading, and public hearing of the following zoning ordinance. Oh, Mr. Rooney, now you're doing good, you're doing good. I know somebody had a question for you. Welcome back, Mr. Rooney. You're up, sir. Okay. Take a sip of water if you need to. All right, then we'll go.
Zoning ordinance of the-
Into the microphone, Derek, sorry. Thanks, buddy.
Zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Pelican Landing Golf Resort Ventures LP to amend Lee County zoning resolution number 94014, Pelican Landing Residential Plan Development, RPD, Commercial Plan Development, CPD, to 1, rezone 20-plus or minus acres from the Percy Smoot RPD to the Pelican Landing CPD/RPD, and 2, to amend Condition 9, to create F1 in the RPD land development area and adding continuing care facility, CCF, assisted living facility, ALF, independent living facility, ILF, and healthcare facilities Group 1, 2, and 3 to the list of permitted uses. And 3, to amend Condition 12, associated with Deviation 12, to allow a maximum of four residential buildings with a height greater than 75 feet above minimum flood elevation north of Coconut Road in reference to RPD land development area F1, on land located within Pelican Landing Golf Resort, AKA Raptor Bay, at the northwest intersection of Coconut Point Resort Drive and Coconut Road, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134, on 55 plus or minus acres, providing for an effective date. Counsel, this item is also quasi-judicial, so I will swear in any witnesses or any members of the public who intend to give testimony at this time, please stand and raise your right hand and swear or affirm, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, thank you. That's it. The applicant will give the presentation. Obviously, the council is well aware, this is, this is part, parcel of the WCI litigation that the city has been involved in over the last couple of years. You don't really need a reminder of all that, so I'll go ahead and let the applicant make their presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Rich Ivanovich, on behalf of the applicant. Make sure I got this working right. As, as Mr. Rooney has pointed out, we're here to complete the rezone process for the Raptor Bay property. The property is under contract with my client, London Bay, and I represent the applicant in this particular matter. With me, if you have questions regarding planning aspects, are Alexis Crespo, who you've already qualified as an expert, and Ted Trish, our transportation consultant, who you've also already qualified as an expert in your prior hearing and many, many other hearings. As Mr. Rooney has pointed out, we're, we're here to amend the zoning for the roughly 55-acre parcel that's on your screen. I'm not sure if you all can see the screen from where you are, but you're very familiar with the property. Essentially, what my client is seeking to do is just to clarify a couple of things that are already provided for in your code as part of this process. In addition to doing what Mr. Rooney mentioned, we are here to request that we clarify that as part of the actual density for this project, we would get 503 units related to this project. And that analysis has been done based upon prior approvals of the DRI, and your staff has confirmed that there are 503 units remaining in the, the DRI to be transferred to this site. We also did a transportation analysis, because there was some question as to whether or not what the court approved was 400 units, which is 503 units. We did the additional transportation analysis on the 103 units. And that analysis has been confirmed by your expert to show that there are no level of service issues related to Coconut, Coconut Road, and there's a condition in your ordinance that requires us, or if we don't quite close on the property, the current property owner, to help fund the traffic signal on Pelican Colony Boulevard and the intersection. And then the other thing that we're, I'm gonna try to fast-forward through this, because most of the- because most of the, they've got the, sorry, I don't know why it's like this, but, I could bring Alexis up here if you want to hear from her, but what we, what we want to do also is, again, confirm that we can also build continuing care facilities or independent living facilities. It's already allowed for in, in the Lee County Code, which is what we're traveling under. So we've added those requests to the PD, and I believe at the end of the day, we're in agreement with staff on all of the staff conditions, and staff is recommending approval subject, subject to the conditions that we've, we've agreed to. It's a short and sweet, you had a very long presentation on your last term, but I know you're very familiar with, with this, with this item, and if you have any specific questions of Alexis or Ted, I'll bring them up here to answer any questions, but those are really the clarifications that we're seeking through this process for my, on behalf of my client, London Bay. With that, we'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions at this point? Okay, seeing none?
Motion to approve, or are we going to hear from staff?
I'd like to hear from staff, please.
I'm just waiting for the presentation to load. This is still the applicant's presentation? Thank you. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, and I too will try to be brief, most of the material is covered in the staff report. Mr. Rooney did provide as part of the addendum of revised ordinance based on the zoning board hearing that took place yesterday, which reflected some changes in conditions, mainly in condition three and four relative to traffic and environmental conditions. You did receive today from the clerk's office some public comment, some public comment does pertain to this case, and some of those topics, I will go ahead and, oh, it's not loaded. Okay. The title is Pelican Landing, RPD, CPD, and it has agenda item 4B1. It's okay, we won't, it's all right, we won't need the presentation, I'll just load my other one for later. Essentially, what I wanted to go ahead and go over with the zoning board hearing that took place yesterday is, was essentially a three-part motion. All motions did pass. The zoning board members did have some concerns and questions over the uses that were added. They had a lot of questions on the county's coastal high-hazard policies and the goals that we would evaluate for shelter evacuation. Also, for this type of, the extra uses that London Bay is asking for with the assisted living and continuing care, how does the Lee County Conference of Plan address those uses in terms of evacuation and sheltering? And essentially, that is done through the Lee County Emergency Management Review of a, an emergency preparedness plan, and also facilities such as those are required for licensure with the Agency for Healthcare Administration. It's a very extensive plan. So we found as staff that they did meet the Lee Plan goals and policies, because again, we had to review this under the Lee County Plan at time of annexation. In terms of the extra uses that they're asking for, because of the judge's final arbitration order, the uses, once they're in the building, the, the uses under the Lee Plan, it, for those types of uses are very similar to multifamily uses. There is no distinction at that larger, long-range plan level. So the uses that the applicant is asking for, staff has no objection to those. But the other items that came up under public comment were the concerns about putting certain populations in the coastal high-hazard area, and then the density equivalence that the county code affords to these types of uses. Other than that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have, and we do have Special Land Use Counsel David Theriak on the phone.
Okay. Amy?
Could you just clarify, there are only a couple of things that were not included in the settlement. Could you just mention those things? I mean, what they're asking for is a couple little things. I just want to identify them.
Sure. So the items that are not contained in the final arbitration order deal with the clarification of density that remains in the DRI, but also in the plan development. So there's clarification on that, and we did go over that analysis with the applicant and their team, and we did agree with their findings. The other changes are the additional schedule of use changes for assisted living, continuing care, independent living units. So those are new uses. And then there are some slight changes to the property development regulations. That would be required regardless whether or not it was a assisted living family use or a multifamily use. So you do need property development standards to go ahead and put the buildings. So there was a standard in there for perimeter setback, there's a standard in there for open space calculations, and for that, it, it makes sense, regardless if London Bay was coming in with those extra uses or not. The other clarification was for alternate uses below the 75 feet in height, and in my testimony yesterday, what I informed the zoning board of was when this, when the portion of Pelican Landing, RPD, CPD was approved in 1994, it was designated as RPD Area E, and that area allowed for multifamily uses at heights of 75 feet or less and a variety of residential building types. So, in that essence, staff had no objection to that change that they were also making.
Councilwoman Karumba, maybe I, I'll just like a, like twist on that, which is that when we go through a process of litigation, we have an arbitration, and arbitrator makes a decision, he's making decisions on the key legal points, he's not making planning decisions and practical decisions that have to be dealt with at, at that level. When the court confirms that order, they're also, you know, the court, in fact, approved the zoning that was applied for in 2014. Lot of the details, including the next item on the agenda, were things that never got worked out through the planning process because of the litigation that ensued in the intervening years. So the contract purchaser, London Bay Homes, and the city have a great deal of interest in confirming certain details of the application that would normally be processed but for the, the court action. So a court says, you have a zoning, you have four towers, you have 400 units, it doesn't give us the details on those deviations that Jackie was discussing about setbacks for buildings and things like it. It doesn't clarify the traffic studies, it doesn't clarify the issue of the additional units, which the only reason that wasn't in the confirmed order was because we were still in dispute as to doing the homework on establishing those numbers. A lot of what's in the petition today is stuff that is helpful to the city and transparent to the public to know what is actually going there.
And we're comfortable with the number? I mean?
The 503, yes.
Jesse? Laura?
I think it's a great project, I want to see it going.
I'm a little confused on the 502, 503 number, because I thought that that was rejected by the judge in the case.
Well, I'll, I'll give a little more background to that, and Mr. Theriak, who actually handled that hearing, can address it as well, but after the arbitration order went into place, we had conversations with WCI as to what was the, the final unit count that would be associated with this project. We had, we had seen multiple reports through the planning process of 400 units. There had been some numbers thrown out that were in excess of 503, but we were still disputing a lot of issues, and we, WCI, at their, it's their right to proceed, wanted to get a resolution on that through the courts, where we wanted to do the homework and, and figure it out because Pelican Landing, DRI, has a number of units associated with it, which is something, you know, we've talked about coastal high-hazard, all of Pelican Landing is, is in the coastal high-hazard. So the issue was where those units get allocated. Annexation agreement that the city had with WCI provided that they are entitled to all the units in Pelican Landing to put into this, this Raptor Bay project that are available. Now, there were certain things the city did not, was not aware of, there's a parcel, the M&amp;N parcels that have a separate settlement agreement that limits their number of uses. So Alexis Crespo, on behalf of London Bay Homes, and her, and her planning team, Lindsay, I cannot recall her last name, they went through, created a spreadsheet, looked at all the building permits that had been pulled, all the zoning approvals that had gone in since Pelican Landing was established, to determine how many units were in fact still remaining. Our staff reviewed that and agreed with it. If that analysis had been done prior to the court hearing, we, we would have stipulated to that amount.
Okay, I guess, and I think you addressed this earlier, but my, my concern, you know, is if we get a storm surge or hurricane surge, whatever, 502 units in an assisted, assisted living, or whatever the three levels of care are, represents a lot of people that have got to be evacuated once an emergency evacuation order comes out, so. But I think you addressed that in terms of the Lee County requirements and some of the emergency services requirements, and we're satisfied that those have been met.
They meet the Lee Plan and Lee County LDC requirements. So what, what happens is, in the Conference of Plan, there's a requirement to go ahead and provide the mitigation, especially in this case, because if they decide to pursue a facility that is an assisted living facility or continuing care, there's also land development code provisions in the Lee County Land Development Code that require them to meet specific mitigation requirements for shelter and evacuation.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
I'm good.
Fred?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the public hearing, so there's an opportunity for any members of the public.
Yes, anybody in the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Hello and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Joanne Ribble, and I'm a resident of the colony in Pelican Landing, and I have been following the London Bay project since the very beginning of their focus group meetings. I applaud London Bay's commitment to have public access to Estero Bay on their Bayview property. I am in total agreement with the one-boat ramp proposal. Over many months, they have met with boaters and have amended the design for safety and better traffic flow for boat launch as per these boater suggestions. The proposed marina was not meant to be a launch area to accommodate boaters from all of Lee County. It was, it was meant to be, to serve the local neighborhood community. There are sufficient boat launches and ample parking at other sites close by. Future construction on Coconut Road, which will include Raptor Bay and the new Coconut Landing development, will increase traffic. We do not need the additional traffic congestion that would come about with a larger public That would bring a perilous condition to Coconut Road. Coconut Road cannot be widened, Coconut Road cannot safely handle the current traffic it has during season. If this property is to be developed as a CCF, that would be the least impactful on Coconut Road. Please do not require London Bay to increase marina capacity and parking or in boat slips, nor require the addition of a second ramp. We know that there have been discussions with other commercial ventures for this property, but none were deemed financially lucrative. I urge the council to support this proposal. I would hate to see Bonita Springs lose out on this opportunity to gain this unique access to Estero Bay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joanne, thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve in a second? Is there further discussion? Derek, anything else?
Nothing additional.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As a, as a, I'll have Ms. Gensen probably give a little presentation on the next item, which is the Pelican Landing, DRI amendment, but I'll, I'll give a little brief introduction. You've approved the zoning, but the city of Bonita Springs has a local development order, or a development order for the Pelican Landing, DRI, which needs to be necessarily updated to reflect this change. So what you see before you is a resolution and a draft map, development plan, and updated 16th development order for your consideration.
Okay, counsel, Jacqueline?
Good evening, for the record, I do not have a presentation for you tonight. It's, my memorandum pretty much sets forward what the action is and why this is needed, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel?
I just have one question. I'm a little confused, how tall will the residential buildings be? Are they 75 feet? Are they taller than 75 feet? I'm reading it as more than 75 feet, so I, do we know?
Yeah, the height question is more pertinent to the zoning action that we just discussed. But as I understand it, with the court order, it was so many stories over two floors of...
Twenty stories over two floors of parking.
Thank you.
Twenty stories.
Sorry?
Twenty stories.
And typically with the height, there's going to be perimeter setback requirements, building separation requirements, similar to how we've done other towers within the city.
That's what I, I wanted to hear that it's 20 stories, because one of the things I was concerned a little bit about the density, and for example, in Bonita Bay, our towers are about 300 feet, so it adds to the ambiance around those towers. So this, you know, that sounds like a good idea.
Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been a motion to approve in a second? Is there another comment period now, Derek?
I would go ahead and open it up to any public comment.
If there's any members of the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing done, there's been a motion to approve in a second, counsel, is there further discussion?
I just wanted to say a couple things about the project. Number one, I never expected to see Mr. Weeks here, so that was a very compelling piece. I feel like, you know, there's, there's a number of emails over the last, you know, months or so that tend to get caught up in the folklore of what could have been, and, and not really...
Microphone, please, Jesse.
I feel like in the last couple of months, we've had a number of emails, you know, kind of caught up in the folklore of what Weeks Fish Camp was supposed to be, you know, and just seeing you here, really, that, that put my mind at ease, and the things that you said were very, very well, well-worded. As far as the program, the, the project itself goes, I think that the public give back on that is great. I think it's great, and I, and I want to thank Ms. Ribble for coming also, because we've had a number of issues on... Jesse, this is actually not the Weeks Fish Camp one, that's, that's going to be the next thing. Oh, we're not in there yet. Cart before the horse, cart before the horse, sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Life is good.
We'll wait, we'll wait on that.
Kind words are kind words, no matter when they come.
We'll wait on that.
All right, so motion to approve in a second, is there further discussion at all, counsel, at this time, or anybody from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Councilman Gibson? Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Derek, for the public hearing, does the last public comment have to be remade for this one, because I think it pertains to...
What I, what I would do is, because you did have some public comment at the very beginning of the meeting too, that was reflective of the Bayview, I would just ask that, you know, we incorporate all those prior public comments into the public comment for the record transmittal.
Okay, what's next? Who's next?
The next item is, this is a, a public hearing on the transmittal of the Bayview on Estero Bay. This is the Weeks Fish Camp project. This is a comprehensive plan transmittal. It will be going to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their consideration and review. They will send back comments. It's not a first reading of the ordinance, we'll have that at another time, but it is the, the first step in that process.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you again, for the record, Rich Ivanovich, on behalf of the petitioner. Before you is the actual Bayview on Estero Bay project, and there are two comprehensive plan amendments related to this project. First, I want to introduce the team. Project team includes Mark... Project team includes Mark Wilson, Lisa Van Dean, and Danville Ledbetter from London Bay Group, myself, as land use attorney on the project, Alexis Crespo, who you're familiar with, is our land planner, Ted Trish is our transportation consultant, Dan Trescott is here and can answer any questions you may have regarding hurricane evacuation, Mark Kincaid is our marine engineer, and Micah Jackson is our civil engineer. We're going to try to streamline the presentation and have Alexis cover a lot of the topics, but the backup experts are here in case you have, you know, specific questions relating to those particular trades or expert skills. The project location is approximately 30.5 acres. Everybody's familiar with the location of the property at the end of Coconut Road. It's the old Weeks Fish Camp property. There are two comprehensive plan amendments related to what we're requesting. First, there's a map amendment to bring in the remaining property that was annexed into the Coconut Village designation on the comprehensive plan. So that's the first amendment, which you can see right now, the current property is designated partly resource protection, which is in the green area, and Coconut Village, which is in the purple area. The yellow area that has got the diagonals is being brought into your comprehensive plan through this amendment. And as you can see, the purple area will increase, which will be where the development occurs, and then there's a small area of the green, which is resource protection. So that's the first amendment that you're going to be considering as part of your ordinance adoption. The second amendment is an actual text amendment, which would bring all of the property into the underlying text for that, and we would be adding some additional uses to the Coconut Village designation. And the allowable uses, again, that we'd be adding, and then you've heard about, is continuing care facility, independent living, assisted living, and skilled nursing as part of that CCF can be added. We are also making specific commitments that Mr. Weeks alluded to in his earlier comments for public access to the waterway through the comprehensive plan amendment. Assuming we get the comprehensive plan amendment transmitted, when we come back, we'll have the, at the adoption hearing, the, probably the PD, or maybe the PD will lag a little bit, but ultimately, we'll have to rezone the property as well. Our presentation tonight will be, Mark Wilson will talk about London Bay to give you a little bit of an overview of London Bay and their vision for the property. Alexis will take you through property history, comprehensive plan consistency, and then the staff report and conclusions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to go ahead and tell you a little bit about London Bay's vision for the property.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. For the record, Mark Wilson, president of London Bay. So I think, as everybody knows, that this property has had a lot of focus over the years, and I think knowing a little bit about who is developing the property, I think is pretty important. We think it's a significant piece of land, and we're very excited about the project. So just quickly on London Bay, we've been here for 30 years. I founded the company in 1990, and fortunately, we've grown over the years to be a pretty comprehensive home building and development group. I think it's important to also point out, we're a local company. We care about the community. All of our ownership is local, and all of our employees are local, and all of our management is local. Why does that matter? Because this will be a legacy project for Benita Springs, as well as for London Bay, and we care about our neighbors and we care about the community. As a company, we've got an excellent team of professionals of about 100, and I think over the years, it's fair to say that we've built up a reputation for integrity in the way that we deal with people, extremely good customer service. We always are pushing design to be up to date. We believe in dealing with everybody with professionalism, and fortunately and importantly, for a project of this size, we have the financial strength to make sure that the project happens. I think it's also worth just adding, just as a company, we care about our team. We've been a Blue Zone company now since just about when Blue Zone started, and before that, we had a substantial wellness program within the company. So let me talk quickly about the vision. As I said, I see this as being a legacy project, not only for us, but for the city of Benita Springs. I think we have the opportunity to create a world-class project. I don't say that lightly, I'm not using hyperbole, but I think what we're doing within the life plan and senior living place is at the very top of what you're seeing anywhere in the United States. As you've heard from already Joanne and Jim Weeks, the marina has been a very, very important subject, and probably the most talked about thing with anybody that we've met with. I think the important thing here is to say, over the previous approvals, we are actually increasing public access on what goes on in the marina, as well as giving perpetual access to the citizens of Benita Springs. I'd also like to point out, this is at absolutely no cost to the city and no cost to the public. If the project wasn't economically feasible, we wouldn't be able to build the marina, and we wouldn't be able to allow the public access. I think it's also just worth talking about, and there's been some discussion over this over the period of time, is what do we mean if we end up doing a life plan community instead of residential? What does that mean? And we've had all sorts of comments, some of them not so kind, implying that this is going to be a nursing home. It's not. What we're talking about is a life plan community with predominantly independent living, and that independent living is as good as any condo that is probably available anywhere in the marketplace. If you just take a look at the screen, this is an example of the project that we're currently doing down in Naples, and this shows the clubhouse. And as you can see, this is impressive designed real estate, and above what you're seeing here is only 16 residential units. So these aren't small places where people only spend a couple of years of their life. We expect a project, when it's a life plan community, to give people extended life with great health care and wellness capabilities. And just a couple of other things here. Here's a, pulling back onto that project, shows more of the residential. So I think you get the idea that what we intend to do is absolutely first class. Let me just talk a little bit more about the marina, because again, over the various meetings that we've had, there has been some misconceptions. And I'm just going to do, and there's a slide here of the comparison to what was previously zoned and what we're asking for our project. So first of all, both projects had a single ramp, and we're continuing with a single ramp. And as you've heard from the previous speaker about the last project, to try and thread the needle on this issue is very complex. You've got people that want two ramps and more access, and you've got our neighbors at Pelican Landing that adamantly oppose two ramps. And we are trying to please as many people as we can. The one thing I can assure you is you can't please all the people all of the time. In addition to that, previous plan had 10 trailer parking spaces. We've increased that by 50% to 15 trailer spaces, and this was after multiple discussions with the public. Wet boat slips, previously, there was a requirement for approximately 10% or seven wet slips. We are providing 10 wet slips to the public and two for emergency services. Again, from public interaction, we got the desire for kayak and paddleboard launch, and we've come up with a very good solution for that. As a paddleboarder and kayaker, being out on Estero Bay will be absolutely gorgeous. In addition to that, we've included car parking on site, which wasn't previously required, of eight spaces. I think this is an important one. I think it is such a beautiful spot. We have dedicated the very closest area, closest to the bay, as a public park, and creating it as a sunset park. So people have the opportunity in the morning to have a coffee, maybe at lunchtime, a sandwich, and in the evening, hopefully, they'll take a beer or a glass of wine down and watch a beautiful sunset, or throw a fishing line in and hopefully cast a wonderful snook down there, because there's some good ones there. In addition to that, we are going to give public restroom facilities. We're going to also include a ship store, again, not previously in the previous applicant. And in addition to that, we have been working with Lee County for some parking along Coconut Road, which would be parallel parking. We don't have a commitment to that yet, but there is no reason to think we're not getting it in our current negotiations with them. Again, from the various meetings that we've had, there's been a huge question about the trailer parking and the public parking. And in order to clarify this, we went out and bought an additional parcel along Coconut Road. And the purpose for that parcel on Coconut Road is twofold. One, to create staff parking for the community, and two, was to add both trailer parking and regular car parking. So a couple of pictures here about the marina. Previously, on the left, you've got the marina as Jim and his family had that was there, and today, we're showing you what it will be brought totally up to date for 2020 and beyond. It's going to be an example, I think, of a really lovely marina that is very well planned with great landscaping around it. This is a site plan. I think the main purpose of this is to show you where the vehicle parking is and the ramp. Again, we had substantial public input, and from that public input, this has been redesigned for more trailer spaces, for better vehicular transit, and we've had our experts work with some of that exterior input in order to make it better. Just another view dialing into this, but I think this is another nice one here, again, meeting with the community, talking about the kayak launch. We've dedicated an area that is safe, away from the main boat launches for the project. And the last slide just lists all of the above of what I've already gone through, so I won't go through that again. Just before we go to the planning overview, I just want to go back and say, you know, we purchased this project, or this parcel, back in April of 2018. Even before purchasing the parcel, we approached the council members that were willing to meet with us and asked for their input, and said, what would you like, and how can we help? And in actual fact, we put our application in as early as November of 2018. And I think the two things that we got from the council that were important, one was, please be open with the public, please have public meetings, and please be open with staff. And the second thing that we got from them was, please work with the community on the marina, and we would like to have public access. Not all of what I've listed in terms of what we're offering, but please give us public access. So with regards to being open to the public, we've had over 60 meetings. I think it's fair to say, there isn't a single group that wanted to talk and listened about this project that we haven't met with. I think it would be hard for a developer to do more than we've done. Some of those people, we've met with three, four, and five times to try and make sure that there's a good dialogue and a good understanding. And from that, I think, came some very good ideas that we have implemented. So the two requests from the council, think about the marina, we've tried to do our very best with, and as I said, thread the needle between all the different constituencies, and secondly, be open and forthright and have meetings and include people, and we've done our very best from that. In these economic times, it's probably important just to remember just where we are at the moment. And Alexis is going to give you more detail on this. But I think it's fair to say, the financial economic impact of this project on Benita Springs will be extremely positive. It's going to create not only jobs during construction, it's going to create a substantial permanent jobs for the community. And not least, many municipalities at the moment are concerned about tax revenue, and I think that's across the country. This will substantially increase the tax base for Benita Springs. And I would also just like to finish on, I can assure you, this will be a first-class project. With that, I'll hand over to Alexis.
Thank you.
Thank you again, for the record, Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering. As Rich and Mark noted, I'll just walk you through the data and analysis to support transmittal of the proposed text and map amendments to the comprehensive plan. This first slide, I am, on Slide 23 of your hard copies, depicts the subject property in aerial view, showing it clearly an infill property. You can see Coconut Point to our south, golf course uses around us, a heavily impacted infill site with remaining septic tanks and wells from past uses that will be resolved and mediated through redevelopment of the property. As was noted in the staff report, the southern portion of the site was annexed into the city in 2014 and intensified through a CPD rezoning action, which changed the allowable uses of the southern portion to 207,000 square feet of commercial uses that can be built per that current zoning approval on the southern half of the site. The northern portion, while annexed into the city, still retains Lee County future land use designations. This is an aerial, not so long ago, it's only from 2005, so about 15 years ago, but you can see the state of the marina, as well as the residential uses, single-family and mobile homes that existed on the site historically, and the marina area in contrast to what is being proposed with substantial enhancements to public infrastructure so that the public can really enjoy that waterfront area. This next slide shows our surrounding uses. This becomes more important to the conversation as we get into comprehensive plan consistency, but you'll note that this really is the epicenter of development right now in Southwest Florida. This is one of the last remaining redevelopment opportunities on the waterfront, and this has really become the premier place for quality development in our region, evidenced by Pelican Landing, Raptor Bay, and all the wonderful uses along Coconut Road that will be complementary to and compatible with our proposal. So what is before you tonight is a text amendment as well as a map amendment. The map amendment is really housekeeping. This property is still in Lee County future land use, and it needs to be placed into Benita Springs future land use category to be developed within the city. The text amendments will allow for this property to be developed less intensely than permitted today, as evidenced through our data and analysis. I noted the 207,000 square feet of commercial uses, our text would allow for a residential development option that would reduce the commercial abilities that currently exist on the site. The residential program could be 300 multifamily units, conventional multifamily condominiums, or 300 CCF, continuing care facility units, that would also have an ALF component for some skilled nursing beds. So that is the proposal. And in addition to that, we are proposing to modify the text in your comprehensive plan to build in all of those public amenities that Mark spoke about. It's very rare for a developer to want to put that level of detail into a comprehensive plan, because they are difficult to amend, they require state review to make amendments. But we included an entire paragraph in this text to cement all the commitments related to the boat ramp, the marina, and the public facilities that we've presented. So Rich has shown you the slide, the yellow hatched area is in Lee County, approximately 13 acres, and we would be proposing to bring the entire site into Coconut Village, which, again, just makes sense from an implementation standpoint. We would also retain any wetland areas within the city's resource protection future land use category, which will allow for perpetual protection of any environmentally sensitive areas. I've walked you through the text amendment to Policy 1.110-2, adding continuing care, establishing a maximum density for the continuing care facility, and you'll note some minor housekeeping to update the current FEMA standards, as well as coastal high hazard references. We have provided in the lengthy package before you, the data and analysis to support the density being proposed. We've compared and contrasted that to the existing commercial allowed on the southern portion of the site in the CPD. That results in a net reduction in impacts from a traffic standpoint. We've also provided all the letters of availability from your utilities, fire, police, to ensure that this project can be serviced by all the necessary public providers. that this project can be serviced by all the necessary public providers. Ted Tretius here and can speak in detail to the transportation, but this was reviewed at length by your staff as well as the Village of Astero. And the proposed residential uses at minimum will decrease trips on Coconut Road by 1,700 trips per day. So if that was 300 multifamily units, which is the highest trip generating use under this amendment, that would be a reduction of 1,700 units. If London Bay moves forward with CCF, that produces even less trips, and so we would have an even higher trip reduction. So that was certainly compelling to the Pelican Landing folks and residents along Coconut Coastal High Hazard Emergency Management, we submitted the necessary evacuation study with our application, demonstrated a de minimis impact in evacuation route timing. Dan Trescott is here to discuss that, but it was, I believe, less than a two-minute change when this project is added onto the roadway network, so we've provided that data and analysis. A good question, I think Mr. Corey brought up, was how these facilities are evacuated if there should be a hurricane event. I have a 240-page document that I will not read aloud, but this is what is known as a comprehensive emergency management plan. This has to be approved for any CCF facility by the state, by the local government, provided to the city. And about half of this is how to evacuate residents if a hurricane should occur. And it starts when there's a tropical storm in St. Thomas. If we're even near a warning, they've already got a plan with a service provider to get folks out to safety, so we can answer any questions you might have regarding that point. So I kind of mentioned this, but the CEMP will talk about emergency evacuation, make sure that there's an adequate shelter. Typically, that's in Orlando, somewhere in the central part of the state, but all of these things are worked out, so it's executed seamlessly. It was interesting, too, they actually have a menu plan for if they have to evacuate, what they're going to feed folks once they get to their destination, which I thought was, shows the depth and thoroughness of these plans that have to be in place. From an environmental standpoint, the proposed marina design will be an enhancement environmentally. We've actually redesigned to reconnect the tidal flushing that occurs, and your staff has noted that at length in their staff report, the enhancements to the environment that will be provided by the project. Also, removal of these antiquated septic tanks and wells so near the Astero Bay will certainly go a long way in terms of water quality enhancements. Mark has touched on the public amenities, so I won't read each line, but again, in addition to the boat ramp, public restrooms, kayak and paddleboard launch, all these items were not provided for in the CPD. There are some that were provided for in that original zoning, but this application goes above and beyond in every single area to provide greater public amenities and access at this site. In terms of community outreach, we are required to have two neighborhood information meetings, which we conducted both prior to filing and then again before public hearings. Fortunately, we were able to do those before COVID, so we had really great turnout at those. But in addition, Mark, Danville, and the London Bay team have had over 60 meetings with various stakeholder groups to design, redesign, even as recently as three months ago, redesigning the parking area for the marina to make sure this is boater-friendly and people can maximize their enjoyment of the site. In terms of comprehensive plan compliance, we have that data and analysis in the package. We are consistent, compliant with your future land use policies. We do want to touch on the earlier one that was brought up, which is coastal high hazard, coastal management area, and when you're talking about densities and intensities. So that was the one objective we'll spend a little bit of time on, 5.2.4. And this states that development must be infill only is the first criteria, so the site very clearly is infill only. And it cannot exceed the surrounding densities on properties around the site. It doesn't say zoning districts around the site, it says the properties around the site, you cannot exceed those densities. And that existed at the time of comprehensive plan adoption. So our first approach at this is certainly, this property was not in the city when the comprehensive plan was adopted. And looking at past annexations, including Phase 1, there has been the intent, the legislative ability by this board to approve intensification of a site for these newly annexed properties that are being brought into the city. Be that as it may, we provided the city with our detailed analysis on surrounding densities in the Pelican Landing project to show that our proposed density, 11.4 units per acre, is still consistent, compatible with the surrounding density. So I'll just walk you through some of those. And I know that won't be visible on the screen there, but let me flip to my, it's Slide 39 in your package if you'd like to see it closer. So the towers in Pelican Landing, south of Coconut Road, again, adjacent to the property, range in a density from 25 units per acre at Altera, 27.8 units per acre at Florencia, 17.2 units per acre at Travoso, just under 17 units per acre at Sorento, and then 10.8 units per acre at the mid-rise closest to Coconut Point. So based upon that data and analysis, we submit to you that the density is consistent with the surrounding properties' densities. This is infill only, and this property, quite frankly, was not in the city at the time your comprehensive plan was adopted upon incorporation. So the staff report has found the application consistent with the goals, objectives, and policy. They have noted that 5.2.4 is subject to legislative interpretation. They've noted that the amendment balances the need for public access to the site, environmental protection, and also allowing for appropriate redevelopment to occur on the site. They've noted the increase and improvement to water quality based on the marina redesign, and that there is adequate infrastructure and public services available to support either development option of the CCF or conventional multifamily on the site. And with that, I think Rich would like to make some closing statements. Oh, I did not, thank you, sorry. My last slide is the economic impact that Mark alluded to, which is Slide 41 in your package. So the temporary construction phase impacts is more than 549 million in revenue, as well as 4,798 jobs being created through the construction of the project. $9 million in impact fees to the city, as well as the permit and inspection fees. Permanently, 139 jobs would be created by the project, including, or in addition to 89 induced or indirect jobs. And the annual operations impact will be over $27 million to the city stabilized by 2028, based on construction timelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
Just briefly to summarize, from a conclusion standpoint, is we've, I think we've met our burden by providing extensive data and analysis to support our requested change to the comprehensive plan. We are consistent with the coastal high hazard policies within your code, and it's a legislative decision for you all to determine the density based upon the surrounding properties. The proposed amendment do not create any internal inconsistencies with your existing goals and objectives within your comprehensive plan. The amendments are consistent with Chapter 163.3177 Florida statutes. And overall, the amendment reduces the intensity on the site and provides a significant public benefit. To maybe belabor a point a little bit longer, but I'll briefly go over the slide. We heard through both of our neighborhood information meetings how important public access was to the waterway. And as you could see from this slide and through Mark's presentation, we far exceed what public access exists today through the existing zoning. And we have listened to the residents who want access to the water and have, I think, exceeded expectations on the property. Again, as I mentioned earlier on, there's two amendments, one's the map amendment, one's the text amendment. And with that, we're available to answer any questions you may have from me, or from me, Alexis, or any of our consultants.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Amy, do you have questions?
Maybe I will, I'd like to hear the staff. There's some things in the staff report that they might make more clear.
Are there any questions at this time, or do we want to hear the staff presentation? Okay. Team Benita.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen. And this time, my PowerPoint is on the computer. So sorry about that from the other item. Yes, thank you. Okay, with us today, I do have Special Land Use Council David Theriak on the phone, and we also have Tom Ross, who is our Transportation Engineer. In the audience, we have John Dolmer, and we have Laura Gibson, Jay Sweet, and Mike Fegan. We also have Mary Gibbs from the Village of Astero. Village of Astero also participated in the review of this request. The request in summary, I won't go over areas of duplication, but the applicant did correctly verify that we have a two-part request for you today, a map amendment and a text amendment. I will have the attorneys discuss with you after my presentation, the standard of review that you use in evaluating comprehensive plan requests. You do use what they call, the legislative decision is subject to the fairly debatable standard of review. So it's a different standard than your quasi-judicial hearings, so they can go over that a little bit later as we go through the presentation. What we want to add and provide in this presentation is, and also in your staff report, is the findings and the information that was received by the LPA members and also the public as part of the LPA presentation back in July. So that is summarized on Page 22 of the staff report. Mainly with the public participation, we had participants that were supportive of the request. They thought that the provision of the access was very positive. They also thought it was adequate based on the needs and then facilities that were available in the area. We also had participants share that they didn't think it was adequate enough. They needed more boat ramps, more parking spaces. And to wit, we explained to them that maybe that's more of an appropriate discussion at time of the zoning application. Other concerns came from the question of the increased density in the coastal management area, and we'll elaborate more on that later in the presentation. The zoning board members, some of them had the same comments. Others felt that this was definitely a great project, perhaps maybe in a different location would be better suited. They saw the positive benefits of the removal of the septic tanks, had some recommendations on other ways to enhance water quality. But overall, definitely both supportive and concerned views all in one. And the motion essentially was to go ahead and support staff's decision, but the motion did fail. The request in summary before you today, as the applicant stated, this is a transmittal hearing. The transmittal hearing allows us to go ahead and transmit the adoption, sorry, the transmittal package up to the state for agency review. That takes about approximately 30 days after they receive our package, and other state agencies also review it, and abutting jurisdictions. Once we receive those comments, we would go ahead and schedule the adoption hearing. So we'd have a first reading and a second reading. What we also plan to do at that time is line up the companion rezoning case. So the rezoning case has been deemed sufficient per the applicant's request, and it is scheduled for the September zoning board, and then ultimately would be scheduled for second reading in October. And hopefully, the comp plan amendment will line up at that same hearing. The location map, the applicant already went over this information, so I'll go ahead and continue on, and I apologize for the font. But the application request, this is also information that you will find in the staff report. It just goes over the specific map request and then outlines a summary of the text changes that are included in the request, and that's all included in Exhibit A. The staff recommendation, it's really, again, because this is a legislative decision, we feel a lot of the decisions where we have disagreement with the applicant, it's really up to the council. It's a legislative decision in terms of creating new policy. So the area disagreement on density, how we have been previously directed to interpret policy, that has come from previous councils. So a change in policy direction would be required in order for our analysis to come from a different standpoint. Also, because of the request, contemplates bringing in property where a building could be erected higher than 25 feet. It does require a vote of five or more council members in the affirmative. And that was a result of a land development code change that occurred about a year and a half ago, based on some other matters in the city. It was that important to residents and the council members to go ahead and put that in the land development code. So that's another item for discussion later on, how we go ahead and you make the motion and to vote tonight. Also, just some areas to highlight, the proposal does have some inconsistencies with the annexation agreement. That does not mean that that should affect necessarily how you decide on this petition tonight, because also in the annexation agreement, you have the legislative authority to adopt a different plan for this property. For the findings of fact, the applicant went over a lot of this already, so in order to be efficient in time, I will go ahead and move on to the next slide. These are also duplicate areas. The text amendment in itself is included in your Exhibit A package. The things that we really wanted to highlight in this area was, based on some of the applicant's modifications, it changes the intent of the Coconut Village category. When we originally adopted this category back in 2014, obviously, we were catering to a category consistent with the annexation agreement. And with some of these changes, we're obviously changing the intent of that category. So the category was primarily focused on creating a resort marine area. The residential piece was just a small component. With these changes, that mandate, if you will, goes away. So it does provide more flexibility to have different uses on that property. So that's just a change we would go ahead and highlight. But also, you have the increase in density. So when we previously approved this back in 2014, the applicant had originally proposed 10 units an acre, and we had come back and said that was inconsistent with the surrounding land use categories, especially the Pelican Landing DRI to the south and also to the west. So we had recommended the six units an acre, and that's how that number had come to be in 2014. So this increase by the applicant is, depending on which development scenario, it's either 6.4 units an acre under their continuing care option, or it's 11.4 units an acre under the multifamily option. So it is an increase in density. The other changes deal with the commitment to provide public access, which we think is a positive. The applicant is correct, there was no standard in the comprehensive plan prior to, and they have voluntarily put that into their petition. Won't go over this information, it's the same. Staff analysis is included on Pages 6 through 7 of the report. Again, already going over how we feel that their changes modifies the intent of the Coconut Village category based on the annexation agreement that was approved. Our consistency analysis also includes areas where we are definitely in agreement, that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And those are basically the general uses, transportation, environmental, things like that. They are consistent with the coastal high hazard policies of the comprehensive plan. We had to make those changes as part of the state mandated process a few years ago. And the applicant is correct, they have submitted substantial data analysis, and they will have to demonstrate that they need those policies at time of development order. The area of inconsistency that we saw was the boat facility citing criteria of the Lee County plan, and that mainly deals with the Manatee Protection Plan. We went ahead and provided additional language to go ahead and address that inconsistency, and the applicant agrees with that language, so that inconsistency was addressed. The second item is the coastal management area, which is the Objective 5.2. And that was an objective that the council approved back in December. And that was based on feedback that we heard from the public as part of the evaluation and appraisal review that was done by Florida Gulf Coast University. And what that was, was to take the previous policies under the coastal high hazard that the city had when they first incorporated, and to take those in and put them under what we call now the coastal management area. And at that point, there was a conscious effort to bring this property in under that map and apply those policies. So that is the policy direction, the legislative direction we have taken to go ahead and apply these policies to the property. Of course, it's council's pleasure if they wish to go ahead and direct us otherwise. Other staff analysis, this just furthers our discussion on the coastal management area. The applicant's data analysis relative to the net density discussion, where we were coming from with that, we don't think it's a fair comparison to utilize the neighboring adjacent high-rise towers as an equal comparison, because those towers were part of the Pelican Landing DRI, which was thousands of acres. And when you look at the total density of that DRI, it is way below what they're proposing. So from a net density analysis, they definitely are consistent, but from a gross density analysis, which is how we have been instructed to view this policy, it would be inconsistent. So in terms of additional staff analysis, these are just some of the items that we heard as part of the review process when we coordinated with Lee County and the Village of Astero. We definitely acknowledge the amount of extensive public outreach that they have done. I actually think they delayed submitting their first application so they could have that neighborhood meeting. And I do agree that they've done a lot of outreach to the public to make sure they're trying to balance a lot of different concerns. We do know that there's still a lot of concerns out from the public community, the boating community, rather, and part of that information is included in your packet. Now, the ECCL has conducted a survey that they had shared some of their findings. They spoke at the LPA. I don't believe they're here tonight, but those were some concerns. But we also know that they've been actively meeting with the Pelican Landing Community Association, and they have different concerns on where they probably want to limit more access. So we do understand the developers in a kind of a quagmire on balancing both interests. So in conclusion, you know, staff definitely thinks this is a good project, but we also see that there are some inconsistencies where we need some legislative direction on how to interpret, because prior direction, we find that there's inconsistencies with the request, based on the density in the coastal management area. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and our team is on standby as well.
Great. Fred?
My question would be, if we approve this, it goes up to state, I believe we can still make changes even at the final hearing, too. Is that not right?
That is correct. You may adopt a plan with changes.
So whatever we approve tonight doesn't mean it's granted or scribed in the irreversible changes, you know? We can improve upon it, work on it, whatever.
Yeah, the state only asks if you make a change, that you'd have to submit any supplemental data analysis to support that change. There's always the risk that they could come back saying that would be out of scope, but it's kind of rare.
Not likely.
Okay. Mike?
I'm good.
Chris?
I'm good.
Laura?
Great.
Jessie?
I'm good.
Amy?
Sorry. I do have some questions, and you can correct me if I'm not phrasing this correctly properly. There, we have an existing Coconut Village part of this, that's Phase 1 or something, and then the surrounding area is suburban.
It's Lee County Outlying Suburban.
Outlying Suburban. And if you look at what it says in Policy 1110-2, it says, "All new development within the Coconut Village Prop category will be required to be zoned plan development. All density, intensity, height, and types of uses will be established during the planned development rezoning process." So my question is, if that's correct, why do we have a comprehensive plan amendment even coming before us? Because I have an issue with the specificity of the comprehensive plan recommendations here. I believe that when we established Coconut Village, one of the reasons why we're having this issue is because we had a comprehensive plan amendment for Coconut Village that was so specific, and then nobody could deliver it. So I don't think it's a good policy or process, so that's my first complaint. And if you look at, under the Lee County outlining suburban category, which is what this other part of the piece of the property is, it says that this property in those areas is intended, that these areas will develop a lower residential density than other future urban areas. And it says specifically, "The standard density range is from one dwelling unit per acre to three dwelling units per acre, and bonus density is not allowed." So at least half or some portion of this total project is subject to that kind of density. And then you introduce what you said in regard to how they did the calculations of density. So I think it does violate our existing regulations and Lee County's regulations in regard to density. And could you explain to me, because I didn't quite follow, you said that you thought that the coastal management area had some kind of conflict, but what is that conflict? Is that density also?
The coastal management area was new, new but not new. The coastal management policies, as they were adopted in 2000, or last year, 2019, those policies were the former city's coastal high hazard policies, and it covered a broader map. And the coastal high hazard, by statute, the legislature had essentially approved a change where they defined what coastal high hazard was. There's a specific definition, and when Conference of Plan amendments are filed, what they have to do in order to essentially gain that approval, there's three different options. But the citizens, when we were doing our Evaluation and Appraisal Review, they were concerned because they still wanted to protect that same area that the city had had in their map, and because state law was requiring us to adopt a new map, a specific definition, those protections we couldn't apply anymore unless we adopted another specific objective or policy, and that is the direction that we received, and that is what Florida Gulf Coast did along with staff.
I understood that part, but how is this project?
This project specifically on that map.
Pardon me?
It is specifically identified on that map.
And that means that, and what limitations are then passed?
We think that they are bound by the policy. What the applicant is stating is based on the verbiage of that policy, because it says at time of adoption of the Conference of Plan that they shouldn't be subject to.
And what are the provisions of that? It's a limitation on density?
Yes, it is. It's a standard that we also addressed with the barefoot hotel.
Well, that's what I just want to review. So if you just look at that wording, this is more dense, it increases density, in your view, and that's why.
In our opinion, yes.
Okay. And I am sensitive to the idea that you've been given direction by council previous to handle gross density and to comply with these regulations. So I think, you know, we've put you in a tough position. I feel it's best to follow through with policy unless we want to change the policy entirely, so. Okay, I don't think I have any other questions, other than, let me see if I have anything else here. And I do have a problem about, there's more than one building that they're suggesting that is over 75 feet. Isn't that correct?
As it's been explained to me, there's a building pedestal with two tower elements.
Does that make it one building or two? Stretching the envelope or something?
Might be subject to interpretation.
All right.
Good for now, Amy. Laura?
I was just wondering, do we need to make two motions or one motion? How do we move forward?
So you've got two elements to this, this proposal. The first element is, and this was at the request of the city during the initial phases of their application, we asked that they break their petition up into two parts, a map amendment and a text amendment. As you've been told, there is an annexation agreement on this property, very similar to Raptor Bay, which required the city to take certain steps, including the expansion of the Coconut Village, future land use to this property. Second, so the first requested action is to vote on expanding that Coconut Village to the remainder of the property, which is the Bayview on Astero. The second is changing the text of what is allowed within that Coconut Village. So it's a changing of the uses from the heavily commercial to a more residential function. So there are two separate petitions, we've consolidated the hearing for ease of everything. That's the basic breakdown that you're looking for. I think John may have some comments on the building question.
Just a quick clarification on that. There has been discussions about how the building would be designed, and in our discussions with the applicant, they have agreed that they would design that building according to one building under the Florida Building Code. So it would just be one building over 75 feet. It would not be two.
Derek, just to clarify, if the first part is just to extend Coconut Village to the entire parcel, that would just extend the current provisions of the Coconut Village to the entire parcel?
Correct.
And then the second one is to change those provisions?
Correct. And so the annexation agreement contemplated the first part, obviously, that those proposals and that those entitlements did not stir any development on the property, and so that's why they've asked to amend the second.
But there's no reason why we have to, there could be another designation for the other half of it, right?
The annexation agreement discusses two phases, and the second part would be part of that second phase, so.
No, no, but what is required is that we incorporate it into our land development, our comprehensive plan. So it doesn't have to be a Coconut Village designation, it could be another designation that we hold within our comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
It is correct that they could, but the way the annexation agreement, in my interpretation, is that that is an applicant-driven decision.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve the future land use amendment.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve the future land permit.
Yes.
For the map, for the map.
And this is.
Public hearing, Derek?
This is a public hearing, and I would recommend that you do a consolidated public hearing for both action items, just for ease.
Okay. Members of the public that would like to speak at the moment, please come forward. Welcome.
The only problem I have, somebody said that they can't widen Coconut Road. I think with both these projects going on, we already have enough impact fees to widen that road, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Welcome.
Councilmembers, mayor, I appreciate your concern on this and working to get to this point with London Bay Homes. My only concern is I didn't hear one word in what Mr. Wilson has offered the public, and that's in perpetuity. I want to make sure that is clear, that what he has offered to the public, open to the public, the sacrifice we're making on that property out there, it is in perpetuity. I want to make sure of that. Next thing is, back before the riot came in, I was in the same position with the family, up and down Coconut Road, fighting that. And Ray Judah was, if you remember him, he represented us at time, because there was no city of Benetia Springs. I don't remember. And we got a bike path out of it. That's all we got. I think that London Bay Homes is offering our community a lot more than that, so I still like to see us go forward in negotiation with them, or, you know, to go forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Josh Christensen. I'm the General Manager of Suffolk Construction. We're a national general contractor, our Florida operations are based out of, here out of Astero. We do about $800 million of work in the state of Florida. I just wanted to, as a lifelong resident of southwest Florida and a South Lee County resident for 25 years, wanted to talk a little bit about the economic impact of the job. You know, you've already seen the stats about the number of jobs created, there's millions and millions of man-hours. We take a lot of pride in hiring local and providing career opportunities for people out of FGCU, also trade workers, to continue their, start and continue their career here locally. And a project like this gives us that opportunity. We employ 150 people, we're one of the biggest employers of graduates of FGCU, and it's hard to keep them here. Projects like this are transformative, they have interest of our younger folks who want to continue their careers here in southwest Florida. Again, I've been here forever. Projects like this are unique, and they attract talent, mostly our local talent, so just wanted to comment on that. I think I saw the stat, about 5,000 jobs, there's at least that that would be created, somewhere close to 2 million man-hours that would be created. So the impact to the local economy is significant. We do big projects, but, you know, I see it happen other places. I'm just super excited, and I'm a big proponent when I see an opportunity here for a thoughtful project to go forward that can also have that opportunity for our local folks and our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, there's been a motion, and a second is a further discussion, counsel. Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Counselor McCory?
Aye.
Counselor Gibson?
Aye.
Counselor Forbes?
Aye.
Counselor woman Corumba?
No.
Counselor man Purdon?
Aye.
Counselor woman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Derek, what's next?
Next would be your vote on the text amendment.
I'll make the motion to approve the text amendment.
There's been a motion to approve the text amendment, and a second, counsel, is a further discussion? Members of the public that would like to speak on the text amendment? Have they been combined?
Yeah.
Just given last call, we can move along. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor man Corey?
Aye.
Counselor man Gibson?
Aye.
Counselor man Forbes?
Aye.
Counselor woman Corumba?
No.
Counselor man Purdon?
Aye.
Counselor woman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Derek, what's next?
Recession if needed.
Short recess if needed.
Now, let's move forward.
Okay. Anybody that needs to take a break, please do, but we're going to keep going, we have a lengthy agenda. Okay. Derek, line it up, what's next?
Next is your consent agenda.
And we are blessed to have London Bay and the same projects in Benita Springs, hope, money, jobs.
All right, counsel, we are on our consent agenda.
I'm going to pull F.
What's your pleasure? Pull F? Other items?
Then I'll comment on E after.
Okay, motion to approve the rest?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second is a further discussion, counsel. Roll call on all items other than F.
Counselor man Gibson?
Aye.
Counselor man Forbes?
Aye.
Counselor woman Corumba?
Aye.
Counselor man Purdon?
Aye.
Counselor woman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Counselor man Corey?
Aye.
Okay, item F. Mike Gibson?
I just wanted to pull that because I had a question. A number of years back, there was a talk about them supplying the trashcans, the larger ones that the truck picks up, and I just wanted to know if there's any info on that.
Counselor member, we do have representatives from Lee County staff here to come forward.
Good evening, mayors and city council, city manager. For the record, my name is Paul Flores, I'm the Utilities Deputy Director for Lee County, but I'm here representing Doug Whitehead, he's a solid waste director, I was unable to attend today. To answer your question, Counselor man, we are not, at this time, entertaining, looking to providing automated carts for garbage service for Lee County, including the city of Benetia Springs. We are currently, our contract right now with a franchise hauler, and it's Service Area 1, that is in services, the city of Benetia Springs is with advanced disposal. We just recently extended their contract for another four years with three-year, with three one-year renewals, and in those terms, we did not specify the ability to provide garbage carts to residents.
Can you?
Is that something that could be looked at with either the extension, the renewal, or next time it comes around?
Absolutely. We could look at that and also bring that back to the city and include those costs that are associated with that service.
Because what I'm seeing in, you know, my district is people have too small of a container, and then they wind up putting garbage bags out, and then the animals get to it and make a big old mess. So I just figured the larger containers most likely would allow them to get all the trash in the container and kind of solve that problem. But I know the bigger containers are harder for everybody to pick up, so if they had the trucks that had the lift, it would work out better, so.
Absolutely. There's some pros and cons when you provide automatic carts for garbage service. We provide carts for all recycling throughout the county, with the exception of garbage. So yes, that's something I could take back to staff. We could take a look at that, also include in our discussion with advanced disposal and try to bring that back to the city. It's an option.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Been a motion to approve and a second? Is there further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Then I just wanted to comment on E.
Yes, please.
The sculpture that said it's going at City Hall. Is there any hope for that to replace the current sculpture that's there? I've had a lot of feedback of people that don't really care for the one that's out front, and that the picture of the new one does, you know, to me, looks like it'd be a lot nicer out there.
I think it's going to go at City Hall, but in a different spot is where it's scheduled.
Not the bench, the one that's out front.
Yeah, I know, but the one, the glassinator is supposed to go at the rear of it. That's what Art in Public Places Committee thinks.
You don't like that sculpture?
I like the one out in front.
I like the sculpture, but I just think it's out of context there. I don't think it belongs in that location.
Well, we can bring it before the committee.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have a meeting sometime soon.
And a cost analysis.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Okay, counsel. Any short recesses? Are we plowing on?
Plowing on.
All right. There is proclamations and presentations. Are there members here from Bubbles of Love? Okay. I think what I'll do, if it's okay, please do come forward. We'll just try to social distance from here, so I don't think I'll do my normal presentation, but I would like to read this proclamation, if that's okay? And would you like to speak ahead of time? Yes, that would be great. Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Glad to be here.
Glad you're here with us.
Thank you, mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Tyler King, and I run a support group for parental alienation in southwest Florida. In parental alienation, 22 million targeted parents are alienated from their children. Those same children are brainwashed into believing one parent is dangerous, and they are deprived not only of a loving, nurturing relationship with that parent, but they are also isolated from that parent's entire side of their family. This alienation leaves the child with no support system and vulnerable for physical and sexual abuse to occur with no accountability. The most important relationship a child has in their lifetime is with their mother and father. When this bond is destroyed, a child loses their sense of identity, and they learn to hate their parent, which later evolves into self-hatred. The alienating parent teaches a child that the unnatural emotion of hatred at an early age. The emotional and psychological trauma will cause the child to have mental issues long into adulthood if there is no intervention. This is why I believe parental alienation is the ultimate hate crime and the worst kind of child abuse. It is so harmful that the 2016 American Psychological Association says that parental alienation is child abuse and is as harmful as sexual abuse. Parental alienation should be recognized as a child protection matter. I just want to show you a picture of a young boy named Killian. I recently heard the testimony of Jonathan Vanderhagen of Macomb County, Michigan. His story is that of a parent's worst nightmare. On September 22nd, 2017, his son Killian Vanderhagen lost his life as a result of parental alienation. Jonathan had fought for custody of Killian in court and told the judge if he did not get custody, something would happen. Jonathan's concerns were not taken seriously, and as a result, he now grieves his son, who only lived to be 21 months old. Had there been a shared parenting plan in place and he had more access to his son, Killian may still be alive today getting ready to start kindergarten. Thank you for believing in putting children first, supporting the institution of family, and encouraging the healthy bond of a parent-child relationship by endorsing this proclamation, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, and I have something to read. This is the proclamation for the Parental Alienation Awareness Day in Bubbles of Love. Whereas parental alienation is found in high conflict separation, divorces, and custody disputes, and takes advantage of the dependency and responsibility of a child, and whereas parental alienation deprives children of their right to love and be loved by the whole family and is very damaging to children. And whereas behaviors such as speaking negatively about a parent to or in front of a child can destroy the bond beyond a loving parent and child, and whereas awareness of this issue creates education and understanding to better the lives of the children in our community, and whereas April, so this is going back a ways with COVID, is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and parental alienation is considered a form of child psychological abuse, and whereas this year is the 15th Annual Parental Alienation Awareness Day, and the caring citizens of our community will gather together and join around world to blow bubbles of love and symbolize that as, as bubbles flow freely, shows so should the natural love that a child has for both parents and both sides of their family. Now, therefore, I, Peter Simmons, mayor, for the sake of the precious children of our community and the world, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2020, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day in Bubbles of Love in the City of Benita Springs. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons. So with that, thank you. Thank you very much. I think we'll do this, if that's okay, kind of a altered. Thank you very much. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to mayor and council member items. Item A is approve a resolution joining the 2020 National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. We have it here, item 196 with the Weyland Foundation. And last year, the residents from more than 3,800 cities in all 50 states pledged to reduce their annual consumption of fresh water by 3 billion gallons, and we're certainly moving forward. So I don't know if council members have any questions on this, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Is there further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just have two questions. How did we do last year, and what do we do to advertise it? Do we know how?
Who are you addressing those to?
Well, whoever ran this program last year, I want to know, how did it work? And how do we advertise it?
Okay. How do we advertise it?
Nobody knows. Anyway, why don't we?
Mayor, last year, our communications department provided that information and along our social media access as well. I will get a report from Laura Taylor, and we'll circulate that back to council.
Okay, because if we're going to do it, I think we should make an effort. I mean, a real effort. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item B is appoint a member of the City of Benita Springs Board for Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacancy on the board. And I think, Deb, do you have ballots? We have two members, correct, or two applicants?
Yes, sir.
And we have Gary Gambrell and Anthony Rosio. Rosio, excuse me.
And Mr. Mayor and counsel, Mr. Rosio is currently a member of the planning board. He has indicated he would step down from the planning board in order to serve on the zoning board, which is his desire.
Okay.
Will Gary then go on the planning board?
Gary's application was good, I think. One of them had applications. Is he an attorney?
I believe he is. I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Councilmember, he has a Juris Doctorate degree from Fordham Law School.
Right, that's right. He was, yep. Okay, thank you.
He's been a good participant on the planning board in the two meetings he's had.
No, I was talking about Gramble. Okay.
And you were talking in reference to?
Mr. Rosio.
Thank you.
Gramble is, what was his, what was his, one of them had an excellent resume. Could you let me know?
It's in the, it's in the green sheet.
Pull them out of the big pile of paper. That's what I did. Counsel, how we doing on our voting?
We're done.
We good? Okay, so we'll get, I guess we'll total those up and do the Jeopardy theme song here in our head. Do, 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 do.
So does the other one naturally go to the other position?
You're too relaxed tonight.
We have five for Mr. Rosio and two for Gary Gambrell.
Okay. Motion to approve the results?
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion, counsel?
Yes. Mr. Gramble, what, would he be able to fill the position?
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay, so the gentleman who lost, would he be able to fill the vacancy that the other guy's leaving to join the other board?
I think it has to be advertised, you have to advertise that it's open, and then anybody has to come forward with that.
Derek?
Well, we could advertise it's open, but we could have the clerk reach out and ask him if he would like us to submit that application and just submit it for the planning board. There is an opening coming forward there.
Okay, so we can keep him in the queue.
Thank you, counsel. Item C, ratify Mayor Simmons signing a letter of support to Dr. Savarisi, a Florida Gulf Coast University Department of Marine and Marine Science in support of Florida Gulf Coast DEO grant application. And I would ask staff to give a little local, short commentary here. I was requested by FGCU to write this, but if, Derek, if you or Arlene want to give some more details on this, that would be great.
Thank you, mayor and counsel. To advise, FGCU did reach out to Lee County, Charlotte County, Cape Coral, Fort Myers Beach, City of Sanibel, Village of Astero, all of which provided letters of support. We do want to clarify that the city is also applying for this grant as well, and so we did include in our letter of support that this in no way is intended to diminish the value of the City of Benita Springs application for the same grant, but that we would support our partners in FGCU.
But are we in competition with them?
Yeah. Does it make sense?
I don't understand that.
Seems a little weird.
From what I understand from the grant application, it does not require letters of support to be, to be, but we were asked for the letter of support to show that if the tools became available to the city through the grant, that it, that we could benefit from them, which we could if it's awarded.
Are they writing us a letter for our application?
Letters are not required for this grant. This is just something that FGCU reached out for.
But didn't FGCU, or at least Dr. Parsons, submit a letter for us that got us a grant?
He did previously, but that, they are in two separate agencies within the school, but that is correct.
Well, it just seems like we're asking for something but not voting for it ourselves. You know, you run for mayor, but you don't vote yourself for mayor when you go vote. Well, are we lessening our position if we do this?
Matt, any thoughts, or staff, any thoughts?
Our view of this is it is not a requirement of the grant to have letters of support. We don't believe that the folks evaluating the grant will be considering letters of support as they are not a requirement of the grant. That's, and we put a tagline in the letter that said basically something to that effect.
No harm, no foul. We're being a good partner to FGCU, but we're not hurting ourselves.
I don't know. You never know with the people.
I'll just read this. The last paragraph says, "This letter of support is not intended to diminish the value of the City of Benita Springs' own grant application for FDEOC, DBG, MIT funding. We look forward to a collaborative effort with Florida Gulf Coast University, Lee County, and our neighboring jurisdictions in addressing the health, safety, and economic prosperity of our citizens." So I'll make a motion to support. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Karumba?
Did you call by?
That was an aye by Fred. Moving right along.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye. But in the, in the future, I, I mean, since we sort of made a commitment to do this, that's why I voted aye, but I do not think this is a good idea to do this in the future.
Or we can hold more meetings, or tell people when they do request something to stage them accordingly. I understand.
Excuse, excuse me?
Well.
I don't understand what you just said. What do you mean?
Tell me, clarify on what you just said. We had a grant, we had a request for a letter of recommendation. When did it come in?
I'll have to look. It was in between meeting dates.
That's my point. It was in between meeting dates, Amy.
So what you said?
So in the future, how do we avoid this?
Well, I don't think, I think it should come before council, before it's sent. That's my opinion.
Okay. We're going to move on to item E. Excuse me, item D, discussion regarding water creation of a citizen water quality advisory committee. And I know it's been a long night, but this is with a lot of the water issues going on and some anticipated efforts that we're taking. Have discussed this with staff and received requests from residents or city council to discuss the possibility of a creation of a water quality advisory committee. The committee could focus on communication, education, and public awareness of water quality issues. This could be a continuation of the city's work with Dr. Parsons and the recent establishment of a waterkeeper. So that is the purpose, and that's why I brought it forward. Counsel, your thoughts, Fred?
I want to make sure of a couple. I think that this is not a bad idea. I think there should be the same thing we did with the outreach committee, which is have a reevaluation by council at the end of a year as to whether this committee stops at that point or moves forward like the outreach committee. The other thing I want to make clear is what is the powers of the committee? Is it what you just read off, or are they going, are we going to try and give them more power, or they want more power?
Simply what I wrote, Fred, at this point, and.
As long as that's what we're doing, I don't have a problem.
I think.
If they're going to come into HOAs?
I thought he was done.
And do things representing power they don't have, I would have a problem with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Fred has said. I also think that it, the mission has to be clearly defined, and that is one of enhancing the communication of the city's effort for water quality and water quantity to the public. I also think because, you know, we have to have liaisons to this, and so some staff member has to be participating in this, and unfortunately, I think the person that's most skilled in that would be Matt, you know, and I think he already has enough to do. So I think if we have this, it should not be a monthly meeting. I think maybe it should be twice a year or three times a year, and I think the mission should be directed, and we also have these contracts going, so I'm not exactly sure how this is all going to work with the contracts that we go, because I think that's the kind of information that needs to be transmitted to the public. So again, I think it needs to be very clearly defined, what they're supposed to do and how they integrate with the professionals, because clearly, the professionals are the ones that know what's going on, and they're the ones that we're supposed to respond to. Often, these committees we have are because there's a lack of expertise in the area, like the technology committees, because we don't have technology expertise, like the art and public places, you know, God help us if we pick the art pieces, you know. So I think that in that way, this, this committee is different. It's really to get the information out that we are providing, we have expertise, we have contracts and all that, that. So I'd be in favor of doing it, excuse me, on a limited basis and to clearly define what the mission is, mainly because of the staff, the staffing that would be required, and how it, we'd have to keep it in line with, with these other contracts. I'm not quite sure how this is going to work, so I'd be careful here.
Yeah, no, and it's, it's what's written there, nothing more, nothing less, and...
Maybe we could table it and then flesh it out better?
I think we can, let's all comment and then go from there.
Okay, Amy, thank you, Amy. Jesse?
I love the idea because I understand how important water quality is to our, to our entire community. With that being said, I understand some of the things that Amy was addressing, and...
Microphone, Jesse, please.
With that being said, I understand some of the issues that Amy was addressing. Specifically, we do have to have a very well-defined scope for the committee, simply because on a local level, when it pertains to water quality, there's, there's limited things that can be done within the city's purview that are not done in conjunction with the county, state, and other agencies. So I love the idea of, of having constant conversations about water, having people who are concerned about water, you know, actually have a committee in our city, so they have a voice, but we got to make sure it's not a, it is not considered a co-equal voice, that, and that we are very specific on the scope of what can be done. I mean, if they want to give us information, if they want to have events, fine, but again, kind of like what Fred said, it's not a situation where we're going to have the chairman or chairwoman of the committee going and briefing HOAs on our position of water quality. So I mean, but I think going into that, knowing that, I think this is a very good idea, so...
I'm in favor. Thank you. Laura?
I share Amy's concern and would like to flush it out better, but it's a, again, it could be redundant. We won't need it because we have experts coming in.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I think we need to also flesh out what the qualifications would be to set on the committee. Is it just, is it somebody that has a business that's dependent upon water, some sort of expertise? You know, because that fits into what the mission of the committee is. Once we figure out what the mission the committee is, I think we need to then decide on what, what we're looking for in terms of committee members. So I agree with fleshing it out.
No pun intended, right? And I've heard it a couple times.
Right.
Thank you very much, Chris. Mike?
Yeah, no, I figured this was more or less just seeing if we were open to the fact of having it and then that everything would be drawn up before we actually do it. So yeah, I'm, I'm open to, to seeing where this goes.
Very good, and like I said, nothing more, nothing less than the words. And Fred, do you have any final comments on that?
Yeah, I, I still think whatever we come up with, we still want to have a valuation built into it, because if it works real well, it'll move forward beyond that first year, but if it doesn't, we either have to fix it or it won't move on. And I do think that people have to have some qualification, because there's all kind of people, both in HOAs and outside of HOAs, that think they know a lot about water and water quality. They all have opinions, but there's a thing called, that requires some expertise. I'm sure we have those people in the city, by the way.
Sure. So staff, do you have direction, or would you like a vote to, you know, to open to the idea and we get some more?
I would like clarification on the, should we require minimum expertise for members of the board? And I, I believe what Councilman Forbes is describing is like a sunset provision, that it lasts for such a period of time, and then the council reviews whether they wish to continue it.
A year, which is, which sounds good, like all new...
Maybe a requirement that they submit a report in that year, so that you have some, some work product to go on on whether to continue the, the council.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So can the staff just get back to us with some suggestions?
Yes, we can bring back a scope and some...
Like a resol, and a resolution, creating it.
And...
And making Matt the chair.
At the Historic Preservation Board, we have a liaison and two attorneys. Are we going to have that much staff needed as well, or can we talk about our number of staff and how many are at these different committees that we're setting up?
So I think we can, by determining the scope of the legislative arm of the committee, that can be determined whether legal staff would need to be there. Additionally, with resources with staff, we're going to come back with a proposal of how those meetings can, can have liaisons. With the amount of projects we have going on, Matt would probably be more of an advisory role, and we would look to have the Benita Springs Water Keeper, when we have that relationship as well, Stewart, sorry, Stewart, Benita Springs Water Stewart. And then also look to community development staff as well, to the environmental staff there, and then them using Matt as a, as a overall resource. But we have to keep the project timelines that we have with the FEMA grants in line as well.
Okay. Counsel, anything else on this? Okay, staff, do you have enough direction?
Yes, we do.
Okay, wonderful.
I was trying to find a way to make Matt be there, because I think, I think he'd enjoy it.
As long as Derek's the attorney.
Thanks, thanks, everybody. Item E, discussion of providing incentives such as administrative leave to city employees who serve as poll workers for the upcoming election. We had Supervisor Tommy Doyle reach out to us. I know they're, you know, certainly like the census, there's some, there's difficulty always, but certainly difficulty with COVID-19 to get the required number of voters and workers. And Arlene, I don't know, I'm bringing this forward as the mayor, but if there's further background there, kind of the same thing is translating into poll workers, is my understanding correct?
From what I understand is that the, the governor did sign into office the executive order which provided incentives for state workers to participate through polls, and, and what with the request from the supervisor election was for you to bring forward, would the city be interested in providing those same or similar incentives to city employees? I know Derek will comment. We, we do want to reiterate that the city staff does not involve ourselves in the local elections process in any way, and want to remain consistent with the charter through that entire process. But we do understand that with COVID, that there is a lack of poll workers that are available, and that's why the outreach occurred.
Would, would this create a problem in the staffing? Because we are light in our staffing. I mean, if we had a big response to this, I think it's a good idea, but I just don't know how it would work.
I don't know at the staffing levels, but I mean, I would say that the, one of the issues we want to address is, is how, would have to be completely volunteer.
Right.
And obviously, issues with, I don't want, I wouldn't want any of the staff to feel that they're somehow compelled to, to get involved in the elections, or to face the public on a day-to-day basis, where right now, we've been trying to, you know, separate our, our staff from the public because of coronavirus. It's simply, from what I saw in the governor's executive order, and I have reached out to a number of other jurisdictions, I haven't seen anyone take a step forward on this yet. I think we're one of the first to talk about it. The issue just seems to be, you know, paid time off, other incentives that would encourage that volunteerism.
But would it be inconsistent with our policy of separating our people from...
I think with your constitutional officers, we most likely would not participate.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think it impacts any of the, the rank-and-file members of staff.
Okay. All right. Direction, we're okay?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Well, if you wanted to provide...
Can't hear you, Derek, sorry.
If you wanted to provide the incentives, we would need direction to that. Otherwise, it would, if, if, if an employee wanted to participate as a poll worker, that's considered outside employment. We have a process for that. It's just a decision whether you wanted to provide an incentive, but if we did, we would recommend it be completely voluntary, and those that are constitutional officers as defined by the charter would not participate.
So what is the current policy? You just give them leave, but it's not paid? Is that what, is that what you said, Arlene? I'm sorry.
So, for example, if folks want to participate as census workers, or we would treat this the same as poll, they, they would work with their direct supervisor on a additional employment form, because if there's, or volunteer time, but we, we would have to look to see if we were going to provide...
I mean, there, the census workers, census workers are compensated.
This is, this is purely voluntary.
I guess the question we would ask is, and we'd have to look at, speak with Ms. Weiss about our, our employee handbook, but would we give them paid day off to, to do it? I think that's probably the standard incentive that's out there.
Correct. Would we be giving them administrative pay to participate there instead of doing city business?
I think we've had the discussion. I think what I would be inclined to want to do is if we have folks that are interested, perhaps we can have the discussion again. I don't want to overkill something that might be a moot point, but maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way. Yes, Fred?
Well, I got one question, and that would be, I'm assuming it's for the election day, not the early voting, but nonetheless, election day, they're going to be exposed to a lot of people, so are we going to then say that they should be given some kind of duty for the next two weeks to make sure that if something got transmitted in the election day, that they don't mess up everybody else that's working there?
I mean, that, that is certainly a risk that we're, we're undertaking by, by considering this. Mr. Doyle did not give us direction as to whether he was looking for support for early voting, primaries, or, or the November election date. So I, I think that would be some of the things that we could implement in direction. Obviously, one-day, you know, event, as the November date is, is easy to, to plan for, but if we're going to have multiple employees taking off multiple days during early voting, that would be, something that has to be decided on a supervisor-by-supervisor basis.
We still haven't addressed the second part. When they're out there, even on election day, they're going to be subjected to a whole lot of people that are all voting with good intentions, that there could be some possibility that some of those people might have it, and I think we need to at least have a plan that any of those people that do that, and I think it's a good idea, that we have a way that they're kind of isolated from the rest of our peoples, so if they do pick...
Mr. Mayor?
Don't create a surge.
Yes. Thanks, Fred.
I just, I, I think we're kind of beating this more than we possibly should.
I, I agree, and I think it may be a moot point.
Right. I mean, we don't, we're talking about paying them for a day...
I think it's all important, but I, is anybody in reality going to do it?
Then we're going to sit them somewhere in isolation.
Yes, Arlene. Sorry, Jesse.
If I may, if I may make up a suggestion, we do have a small staff compared to other cities within the county. If you would let us just reach out to staff and find out first if there's interest from anybody.
Correct.
And possibly, we just limit it to the November election date, since that would be the most need, and if there is no interest on a voluntary basis, then we can move forward.
Yes, that's good. Sounds great. Thank you.
Dynamite. Item F, discussion regarding a request from the owners of property located at 27121 Pine Avenue. Counsel's permission to occupy a portion of the city's right-of-way along Rosemary Avenue. Councilman Gibson, green sheet 20-08204. Mike?
Yeah, so the people were here tonight and spoke at the first public comment. They reached out to me a little while back, because initially, they'd hoped to have it vacated, but, you know, we're talking with the city. It wasn't a very good viable option, because it may be something we'd need down the road, but they, you know, had been taking care of it for a while and really just wanted to use it. So digging into it a little more, I found out that we could do a, like a use agreement, which would allow them to use it, but as soon as we need it, it just, you know, it's, it always, it doesn't revert back to us, because it remains us, but, you know, it would give them a chance to use it, make it look nicer. They're going to maintain the portion, plus an additional eight feet on the other side of what they were asking for. But it was kind of like a win-win situation. It let them get what they wanted, but we still retain the right-of-way that we can use in the future.
Is there any issues with resale on that? Like if they put up a fence or something like that, do we...
No, this is, this is fairly common in a lot of jurisdictions. We just don't have a process for it here in the city. It hasn't, hasn't really cropped up before. So they're maintaining a part of a right-of-way, a planted, a paper street that they didn't realize was a paper street, they thought it was part of their property. They asked to vacate it. We basically, the, the city is generally opposed to vacating paper streets, particularly portions of paper streets, because it, it sort of invalidates the remainder of that street that could be used particularly for multi-use paths, drainage ways, other, other valuable city purposes. So what, and speaking with Councilman Gibson, what we've discussed is, I could prepare a occupation of right-of-way agreement, something that'd be formalized, so that it's clear from a title perspective and otherwise, that they have the right to, to use and improve that portion, but at some point, when the city needs it, we would go forward and, and it would understand that we'll tear all that out, and there's, there's a liability to them as well. So it's just authorizing me to go forward and prepare that and bring it back to you for adoption.
But does anyone else, you, I mean, there's a little diagram, like the red part is their property, and then the orange part is the paper street, is that what it is?
Correct.
And, and what they're trying to do is extend the red part 12, 12 feet, and then what's left is eight feet? And so then beyond them, it would be 20 feet that's open? Is that what the recommend?
Those lines are not drawn to scale. I just highlighted them so you could see what we're talking about.
But the point is that there is, there are two back-to-back lots, and the only one that's, so it'll be like 12 feet into the passageway and eight feet beyond it, and then when you go beyond their lot, it'll be 20 feet open? Is that correct?
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll basically be in the same condition it is today.
All right, so people will have to walk past the eight feet and then into the 20 feet, and somebody will take care of it, all right? And who uses that besides them?
Nobody, really. Before the hurricane, it was, it had a lot of growth in there, but the hurricane knocked down the tree, and so they actually cleaned up everything that was knocked down. So it is actually open right now, and people can walk through there, but I mean, it's not a path or anything, it's just a...
It's not, it's not something that people are used to using, or anything?
No.
Okay.
And, and they can still use it, because they're not taking the whole thing.
I get it.
Even the 20 that they're taking, I think it's still another 20 past that.
Okay. I'm good with it.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye. Great, thank you very much, Mike. Item nine, city attorney's items. Derek?
Yes, I just have, we're getting, we're getting very close to wrapping everything up on the BG Mine settlement. After the properties take change hands, which is the, the 30 acres at the BG Mine site, plus an additional almost 200 acres in a public use easement, and the 248 acres at the BE 278 site, we had draft license agreements as part of the settlement agreement to allow the continuation of mining on the BG Mine site and the eventual sloping and, and reclamation that will, that will finalize the, the lakeshore of the city park. On the 248 parcel, there's going to be the removal of topsoil. Some issues came up through the permitting process on that, including, basically, there were four major issues. One was the haul route, so there is legal access for trucks to move off that site to the intersection of Morton and Terry Street, which is a fairly dangerous intersection. We already have provisions in our, in our settlement agreement for them to improve that as a result of traffic being generated from BG Mine site when the development goes forward. But the, the BE 278 folks are working towards achieving an alternate haul route, which would actually go east along one of, one private right-of-way or potentially a new right-of-way that would be constructed. And they have asked for the ability to, to work that out. We've had some preliminary conversations, Matt and myself, with them. And it could be beneficial to the city and, and provide some additional traffic relief off, off Morton and Terry. So we would like them to be able to explore those possibilities. Ultimately, if they can't do it, they, they will make all the improvements at Morton and Terry. So that has been provided, a change in one of the license agreements. We also added the ability per Councilman Forbes' direction to either line or otherwise make impervious the, the berms that will be constructed at the, at the lakes when they're finalized. That would turn the project at the BE 248 site from a water quality project to also a potential storage site for stormwater, and, and a huge advantage to Citrus Park there. So we provide for that, as well as, as, as Matt goes through the process, and hopefully we start to figure out what we're going to do with the property long-term to maximize water quality. We have the right, under this revised license agreement, to modify the lakes and make other changes that they would cooperate with us. We simply, it'll be at our cost. That was the clarification that was made in these license agreements. So they're replacing the, the license agreement drafts, which were prepared during the settlement in December. But that's effectively what we're making changes to. The only other substantial change is a, there were some typos, Mr. Mayor. I did, I did correct those.
All right.
And the other substantial change was a, we put this, there's a 10-year term on the removal fill from the 248 parcel. Because we were trying to get that haul route and some of the other issues addressed, we didn't want to precipitously start that clock. So there's a five-year maximum of time for them to either get the project started. But that clock does not start until they get it started. And if they don't get it started in five years, then the clock does begin. So we want that project wrapped up, say, in 15 years at the, at the longest. So that's provided for as well in these changes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to move to second reading?
No, this is, I'm sorry, this is the addendum item, this is-
Oh, this is the addendum?
Yeah. This would just be a final approval.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Second, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion?
I have a question for Derek. Is there any, what's the provision of what we're paying for the 30 acres?
We're not paying anything for the 30 acres.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, as soon as everything else is finalized, that, that, the title for that will turn over to us.
Thank you, Derek. Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Great, thank you, Derek.
Okay, the next, the next item is first reading in ordinance. And this ordinance is, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5.1 million in principal amount of debt obligation to finance the acquisition of approximately 248 acres of land, providing for a covenant to budget an appropriate legally available non-ad valorem revenues to pay the principal of redemption premium, if any, and any interest on the debt obligation, providing for the right of the holder of such note, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is an ordinance prepared by our outside bond counsel in anticipation of the, the lending that we requested at the last meeting in order to secure the acquisition of the 248 acres. This ordinance basically just sets up the legal authority for us to do that, which is something that all the lenders are going to require. And it's confirmed that we're not pledging our ad valorem authority for those purposes.
Is there any reason why that's the case?
Is there, uh, well, in order to pledge your ad valorem revenues, you may get a better rate, but it requires a referendum.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's been a motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Derek, anything else?
No, short recesses if needed is the only thing left on the-
Thank you very much. We're going to plow executive decision, where the finish line is in sight. City managers' items.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Today's staff is seeking direction regarding the professional services provided by Capital Strategies Consulting. As you may recall, back in August of 2015, the city entered into a professional services agreement that did provide for two additional options to renew. And as of last year, we have expired the two additional, the two additional years. We are asking direction if you'd like us to bring back a contract to your next meeting to execute regarding continuing an agreement with Capital Strategies. And I, I do know Carol Green and Ashley are here.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Jesse?
I was hopeful that we could get a legislative update on the status of Tallahassee before we worked on a contract, only because, I mean, I've, I've been pretty pleased so far, but this was two councils ago. So I would, I, I haven't even had a legislative update from them. So to, to continue a, a long, ongoing contract, I'd, I'd like to at least get an update on what's going on, and, and then kind of move from there.
Okay. Carol, I don't know if you want to come on up? Ashley?
I've never met a microphone I didn't love.
Yeah.
And I hope, and I believe that you all have been receiving updates from us via email, which is really the only way that we have to deliver those at this particular time. It's pretty hard to meet one-on-one and in person. So those updates that you have been receiving is, is what is going on in Tallahassee? There's not a lot. The Capitol is locked down. A lot of the staff is working from home. You can get ahold of them. I've been able to get ahold of folks and talk to them. But other than being able to reach out to them via email or via telephone, there is no other way to have any meetings. The latest email that I sent to you, I think it was just last week, I don't remember, excuse me, has to do with the fact that we are starting to see our revenue estimating conferences happen. Those are the things that we really watch very carefully, because of the fact that that is really going to tell the tale of what's happening here in our state. We know that we're probably about $2 billion down currently. Don't anticipate that's going to change much because of what we're seeing and because of the fact that we're still having, not that we're locked down, but we're still pretty, pretty locked down. But consequently, and obviously, anytime that you have a question or you need to reach out to us, we're only an email or a voicemail away. So it's not been an opportunity with you or Mr. Corey, actually, because you're both new to the council, and you both got elected just about at that same time, whenever we weren't able to really sit down and meet with either one of you, which is something that we always welcome being able to do.
And I've been, I mean, I've been happy with your feedback via email. I'm, I have no issue with it. But it's a, again, it's kind, it's a contract that was decided well before I got here. So I've never seen a resume, your credentials, I don't know who you work well with, who you don't work well with. I don't know what, I don't know, I mean, last time we put it out, who are, who are you up against? Is there people who are trying to get in now?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, me too, I can't hear you.
My, my issue is this, I'm just not ready to vote on a contract at this juncture.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we do bring forth the contract next meeting in favor of continuing our services.
I'll second that.
Well, and this was just, do you need a vote, or is this just direction to start the nego-
We're really looking for direction. We're really looking for direction.
What is the process, what's the process to, to, for the city to get into contracts with lobbying? So was this originally an RFP, they won, and then they got the chance to continue twice? They've, they've fulfilled both of those, and now we're saying a third, or is this a-
If I might, sir, we've actually been with the city since 2007. So we've had a longstanding relationship with the city. In fact, it goes back further than that. During the time that I was in the legislature, I actually am the one who ran the referent, or ran the legislation for the city to even have the referendum. So we've had a very longstanding relationship with the city, one that we have really cherished, that partnership. And I know that, I know Arlene has additional information, too, that I'm sure she'd be glad to share with you in regards to the return on investment and those types of issues that you might like to see, too.
Yeah, I would love to see return on investment stuff like that. I mean, and once again, I'm not saying you guys aren't doing a great job, but as far as I'm concerned, our, our priorities in Tallahassee are one of the most significant things that we have as a city, as you know, and as a former legislator, you can respect that. So I just want to kick the tires, look under the hood, and get to know you guys before I say, hey, I would like a two, another two-year contract to be the person who's going to carry the water for us. So I want to be comfortable with you guys before, before I personally agree on a contract. And I'm not saying you're not capable, I bet, you guys have been great. I, I just want to know.
Sure.
And just, and just for the, the education of the council, the professional service contracts such as this and, and legal financial advisors, these are gen, these are excluded from your, your procurement rules for competitive bidding, you know, because you have, you have a relationship, you're, you're generally trying to get the best person, not necessarily the cheapest person. It's usually when these things go out to a bid is when a relationship is ending, either because of the, you know, the end retirement of a principal, or the term, there's a, there's a, some upset. So what we would probably be looking to do is, the next council, set it an initial term, and then have it renew on successive terms without limitation. It'd just be every year you would decide you're, you're happy with it and keep the services going, or you would review it at that point, rather than sort of setting artificial end dates.
And has there been reviews annually on, that we can look over? I mean, if, if I could historically look over the last couple of years, and everyone's like, hey, everything we wanted, we got, and everybody loves them, and we have no issues, awesome. You know, but we do it on you, we do it on Arlene.
Well, a perfect example is myself. If you're not happy with me, you give me 30 days' notice, I'm gone.
We have a 30-day notice in our contract, for us and, for us and you. It goes both ways. We can end it, or you can end it. And the last legislate, the last, I don't know how much you know, I mean, I can't meet face-to-face. My husband works in the hospital, so, sorry, and I have four kids. But we got $750,000 for Benita last session when, for water projects, when pretty much all of them were vetoed. So that speaks to your return on investment, and we did put a paper together for Arlene, so she has it through our entire time, what you spent on us and what we've gotten you back. I'm happy to share that with you.
And I'd love you to, you guys seem a little defensive. I'm not saying you guys are-
No, I'm not defensive, I'm just telling, I mean, answering your question.
I get it. I'm, the green sheet, or whatever sheet you made for Arlene, I would love that sheet. There's only seven of us in a 60,000-person town. We're voting on a contract that is going to be the, the people who is going to carry the water for us to Tallahassee. I just want to make sure you guys are as wonderful as I think you are. So don't take it any other way, and I would just love to see it.
We'll forward-
Do you have direction there?
Yes, we have direction.
Okay.
We're going to forward, we'll also forward the correspondence received as well, and we'll bring back a draft to the next council.
Great, thank you, Carol, thank you, Ashley. I know it's been a long night, and thank you for everything you do.
It's okay, I, I'm hungry.
Yeah.
And every place is closed.
Thank you very much. Okay, item B, Arlene.
So our next item, unfortunately Nicole Perino cannot be with, here with us today. We do have a, a brief presentation, and I, unfortunately, we cannot move this to the next meeting, because it will, it will disturb the schedule of the Little League for their, for their upcoming spring season. So we do have to move forward. Matt is able to answer any questions that we have regarding the construction manager at Rick's Services Process. I think what we have is some video of some visual of what the proposal would look like, and I, as well as the contractor is here. So we're happy to show this this evening, or, or wait, but we do need a decision on, on, to move forward in order to keep the scheduling.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion, Counsel?
I just want to say Nicole did an awesome job. I went out and saw the summer camp the other day with the YMCA, and she walked me through the program in its totality, nuts to bolts. She did a hell of a job, so I'm in favor.
Great. Motion to approve in a second. Counsel, any further discussion?
I just have one question, where it says it excludes builder's risk insurance. What is that?
That was not something that was, was part of this. They do have a bond on the project. Unfortunately, I, I didn't walk through each, each one of the solicitations with the contractors.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know if that's important.
But it is bonded, so I mean, you're protected in that.
Okay, all right, all right, that's all.
We can bring back feedback on that, as well as we will try to put the, we'll put the video on a Dropbox for all-
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, team, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Arlene?
Yes, I did want to give a brief update on the, Lee County Commissioners did approve Lee, Lee Care's Round Two, which is part of the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund and the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. I did want to make sure, we're providing all that updated information on our website. The, this is a second round, and those who have received funding previously are welcome to apply again. And it does increase some of the thresholds that were previously provided. Additionally, Lee County Commissioners approved part of the funding, 2.3 million countywide, to go to protective personal equipment, PPE. They have divided that 2.3 million across the county via population. The city of Benita Springs is eligible for $175,000 worth of that in a reimbursable basis. And staff would recommend if we move forward with utilizing that opportunity, it's, it's a refundable process. We will need to go through the federal procurement process to purchase the equipment, and then submit a report and receipts back to Lee County. We would be a sub-recipient, that we just look at focusing it on to masks, which I've been told there is no requirement on the type of mask, as long as it's procured through the federal program, and hand sanitizer as well.
Can you try to get a made in America?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose that we ask Arlene and staff to look into procurement of not to exceed $5,000 for masks that can be distributed through Benita Assistance Office, Cafe of Life, and other various nonprofits that the Outreach Committee is currently working in conjunction with on this project.
Do you need a second for that?
I do. Uh, no, actually, it's under 5,000, so I don't. It's, it's direction, unless there is an objection to it, I don't even-
But, I'm sorry, this is, she just said we're going to get 175,000. You want to use 5,000 of this for the-
Only five. We don't need 175.
Well, no, I just, I didn't understand what your proposal was.
No, no, I was saying, instead of we're allowed to get that much, I'm saying not to exceed five grand, because if it's under that amount, we don't even have to vote on it.
Okay, and, and all I'm, all, I was going to give a report under my section about what's happening with masks, and, and that effort that we started with volunteers to do the sewing is going very well. And they have already gotten donations to cover the 5,000 masks that those entities that you just mentioned had identified as what they needed. So I think that all should be coordinated with what's going on there, because I think what the Outreach Committee might want to do it, like for the businesses or something. So, I mean, I'm not against it, I just think we need to coordinate what we're going to use them for.
No, absolutely, and that's what the Outreach Committee can do. I mean, they're, they're running point on this thing, and they've, I mean, Tony Lee is all, he actually came, we, we outlasted him tonight.
No, he's a council member, he's back in the back.
Tony, hey, Tony, can you come up and give us a little, Tony is the, the Chair of Outreach, and he's done a heck of a job on the, on the mask situation, and-
He's hiding out in the back. Good evening, Tony Lee.
So for the record, Tony Lee, I'm in District Two, and Chair of the Outreach Committee. I want to thank Counsel for having us be a part of all of the various committees that are a part of the city. I wanted to give you a quick update. I know it's been a long night, as it has for me as well. But one of the things that the Outreach Committee has done, since Counsel has met, there was a social justice issue that happened in our community. We did not release a statement, but we did go out and just greet the members of the community that wanted to peacefully protest.
along with provide the resources for masks for our citizens. I have been in communication with face-based organizations. Sheila, she's Morales, she's done a tremendous job in organizing ladies and gentlemen who enjoy sewing to create masks, cloth masks that can be reused. We are also providing educational materials and via printed materials that we want to distribute to businesses in both English and Spanish. As you noticed, that the decals are on the floor, they're all in English. So we really want to promote that there are other materials that are in other languages so that everybody can completely understand and comply with the ordinances that are put forth by the CDC. And so with Unidos for Benita, we, in addition to this mask effort, there is an election coming up, so the Outreach Committee is posting the election timeline, and there's a census. So there's a lot of things that are happening that we are trying to provide the public with information about how government works, and how we can be a resource and support to this community. And as you can see, one of our former members is now serving on City Council, so I think the effort is working. We're actually working with the mission, which is, you know, focused on increasing and providing a gateway or an avenue to make sure that our city is diverse and is doing the best that it can do for all the citizens under Unidos for Benita. So thank you. Any questions?
Tony, thank you very much. Hey, if, if this were to, assuming none of my colleagues have any issue with me asking for us to use these, these funds from the county for masks, do you believe that you have an apparatus mechanism set up within your committee already to run point on distributing these to where they need to go within 34135?
Absolutely. So we, we really do need to provide businesses with some alternative masks, and identified by some of our committee members was the 7-Eleven location off of 041. And if you go, just follow the path all the way around to Senior Tacos, we need to put some masks there. You can go all the way up until you get to, what's our favorite, Trackside Donuts. Put some masks there. So we need to get masks out in our community. Again, these are for residents who may enter a facility and may feel unsafe at that moment and forgot their mask. How many of you guys have done the car dash because you forgot your mask? So if we have these masks available in these businesses, you could avoid doing the car dash. So that's what we want these masks for.
Thank you, Tony, so much. And with that, I would just like to repeat my, my, my thought that I would like to direct staff to, to not spend, to spend no, no more than $5,000 in work with the county in regards to procurement of appropriate COVID-19 masks and hand sanitizer that will then be given to the Outreach Committee and then put out through our nonprofits throughout the 34135 area code. If I don't have any objections.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Tony, I just want to thank you for the effort, and, and I appreciate the focus of bringing in the census, and also for getting out the vote among our Hispanic community. One thing that I think we need to continue to do is to focus on that testing center that's going August 20th. We really need to get that out, because if we can get a good turnout there, it's likely that they'll have another one, and that's going to be at the old library. So I know that the faith communities are also trying to get that message out, but I, the Outreach Committee should do the same thing, maybe through going through the businesses and stuff.
We certainly will do that, and it is a part of our agenda. But, you know, the whole goal is for us to really promote these initiatives, and then ultimately, one day, when things are safe, we'll celebrate with Fiesta Benita again.
Right. That's what we all want to do. We'll come.
Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting us out, buddy. Thank you for waiting us out. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Arlene, anything else?
Yes, just quick, two additional items. I do want to make everyone aware that as of Monday, August 17, City Hall will be a construction site, and it will be under the security and control of our, of our contractor right construction. Temporary City Hall will be set up here at, at the Recreation Center. Folks will be able to interact with Leanne right here. City Council mailboxes will be set up here as well at the Rec Center, and staff will be able to provide any information to you there. I will be at the Community Development Offices, and Matt will be between there and City Hall Council Chambers. We will have very limited staff at City Hall Council Chambers, as we will be under the liability of the contractor. We will also be posting a large sign in the front of City Hall to direct anyone who pulls in, and there'll be traffic signs to navigate folks out the back to the, to the post office so that there are hopefully no nails on anyone's cars or anything as they move forward. So we're moving forward that process, and currently moving out of City Hall now. The last thing I did want to announce, we now have the ability to announce it, is we are one of only three cities named by the Florida, by Florida League of Cities as receiving an award this year. We have received the Environmental Stewardship Award for the Phelps Avenue Bioreactor Project, and we will be part of the Florida's League of Cities annual publication, and they will be contending us about an interview for Quality Cities Magazine. The city was selected of all the applicants, the only other cities, the City Spirit Award is being awarded to the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and the Florida Citizenship Award is being awarded to the city of Palaca.
And I'd say congratulations on the bioreactor, and also, there's two members in the Naples Council who I met with last week who are going to actually be coming up to work, to have Matt Feeney take them on a tour of the bioreactor, because they've heard such great things about it, and they met you, Mr. Mayor, and they met Feeney, apparently, at their City Hall, like, eight months ago, and they haven't been able to forget about it, and they want to get with, they want to come down, so.
That's great. Congratulations, team. Good work.
And Mayor, I did want to thank Laura and her team, as they are the ones who submitted the application to the League.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lauren, team. Great job. Let's keep up the good work. Anything else, Arlene?
That's all I have for this evening.
Dynamite. Mayor and Councilmember items. Amy.
Just pretty much a repeat of what I said, is that I'm very encouraged by the volunteers that have come forward from the various communities. We have, just in my community, we have 20 sewers, we have had donations come in, and when I spoke to Sheila today, they had the cash available for the 5,000 masks. We just need to do the effort, and that's being organized very well through, through Hope Lutheran Church. So we, our volunteers are doing a terrific job, and I'm very encouraged by it. We just have to get the, the educational materials out, and they are doing it bilingualy, and using some of the materials that comes out from the CDC, so we should be very pleased with that effort. And I thank everybody, there's so many people that are involved, I can't even thank them, but I'm, I'm really awed by it.
Thank you, Amy. Jesse.
Nothing from me.
Laura.
I'm good.
Chris.
I'm good.
Mike.
I'm good.
Fred.
Good.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes from July 14?
So moved.
So moved in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Great, thanks, everybody. Public comment.
Yes, I'd like to compliment the person who's in charge of keeping this place clean. I've never seen a hospital this clean. It's beautiful. Carino, he's great.
Thanks, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.